Council, City of Hudson, Monday, June fourteenth, it's seven thirty. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Knutson?
Here.
District one, Morsette?
Here.
District two, Yakub?
Here.
District three, Bernard?
Here.
District four, Wyland?
Here.
District five, O'Malley?
Here.
District six, Virchell?
Here.
First item of business tonight is number three on our agenda, evidentiary hearing pursuant to Wisconsin statutes, chapter one twenty-five, point twelve-two, regarding complaints filed by John Mingo, Robert and Ruth Mosenko, Jerry Washburn, regarding alcohol beverage licensee, Sharon Horn Elstrom LLC alleging that Ellie's on Main violates Wisconsin statutes regarding maintaining a disorderly house. Tonight's meeting is going to be quasi-judicial. I'm going to have our city attorney, Catherine Monkitrick, give us some background for the benefit of the council and explanation for all the attendees tonight, if you would.
Sure, yeah. This is a quasi-judicial public hearing. It's public in the sense that the public may attend and observe, but the public doesn't participate. That's the difference between this and your traditional zoning-type hearing. In this case, this is a hearing under what's Wisconsin Stat's one twenty-five point-two, and there's certain procedures set up under that statute for the parties who are involved in this proceeding to represent, be represented by attorneys, to present witnesses in support of their case or in defense against the complaints, to cross-examine the other party's witnesses, and to receive a transcript of the hearing. So I just want everyone, both on the council and in the chambers here, the public portion is that it's open to the public. The people who will be testifying are those witnesses called by the respective parties. Just the brief, briefly, the procedure will be each party will give a brief opening statement. The complainant will then begin putting on its proof or their proof regarding the complaints that have been filed. Each witness will be subject to cross-examination. When the complainant is completed, then the defendant licensee will present their defense. Again, they present their witnesses, subject to cross-examination by complainant's attorneys. After the close of the evidence, the parties will be given, or their attorneys will be given, an opportunity to provide a brief closing statement. I think that's it as far as procedure. I would ask, first of all, the clerk to verify for the record that the summons and attached complaints were served on the licensee.
Yes, they were.
Thank you. And then I would just ask the attorneys to state their names for the record and who they represent.
Yeah, my name is Tom Jacobson, and I'm representing the complaints Jerry Washburn, John Mingo, Robert Mosenko. And I also represent some of the people that filed complaints but didn't qualify because, well, one of them, a statement wasn't sworn to, and that was Jackie Geiger. And I represent John Bender, who also filed the complaint, but can't be here this evening because he's on a trip that has been long planned. And I represent Pete Foster, who also filed the complaint but didn't qualify because although he owns a business, isn't a resident of the City of Hudson.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Waterman. I'm an attorney in Hudson. I represent the licensee, Sharon Horn Elstrom, who's seated next to me.
Okay, are you ready to make your statements?
Sure. I assume I may stand here. Thank you very much. It's an honor to appear before this council today on an issue that I think is extremely important. I believe it's extremely important because there's been a profound and, I think, disturbing change to an area of Hudson, downtown Hudson, which is a city, of course, that you all represent and we all are very much involved in, and my clients as residents and as business owners in the area of Hudson where the problem exists. The problem has existed since Ellie's began operating at that location on Second Street in Hudson. It's become very serious. And what's happened there is that the noise levels are such that it's disturbed, the noise levels at all hours of the night, day and night, have become such that it's disturbed the people who make their home there. It's, as you know, a mixed area of homes, restaurants, stores, and it's very much affected the people that have been living there. It's affected the stores and the restaurants as well. But the noise level is particularly disturbing to the residents because it occurs late at night, and you'll hear that it's prevented them from sleeping. Jerry Washburn, Jacqueline Geiger, who lives in that area, keeps them up at night. The, the, but the noise, the noise consists of very loud music coming out of the front door, which is often open, and out of the, out of the deck, which is in the back of the, of the bar. And the noise also consists of the vulgar and profane language of patrons who are coming at, coming and leaving at late hours of the night. And this is very disturbing to the residents to continually hear that taking place. They're also concerned about the vulgar behavior of the patrons. They regularly find vomit on the sidewalks when they go out in the morning. They find urination on the sidewalks. They find vomit and urination on their private property as well, located nearby. They're disturbed also by fighting, which has taken place. That's required them to call the police on several occasions. They've been concerned about their own safety, and the fighting and threatening behavior on the sidewalk is, is bad for people that are coming and going from their, from their businesses. There have been numerous police calls, and I believe the statistics is that there's been twenty-eight disturbance or disorderly calls to Ellie's. And there's been seven fights or assaults. The information that I have is that there were emergency medical services calls for Ellie's in the last three months, April, May, or April, or March, April, and May of two thousand nine. The Ellie's, it's apparent, has made a business of promoting and catering to excessive drinking and drunkenness. The conduct of the behavior of the people that are going to and from indicate that they've been drinking excessively and that the business attracts and profits from that particular group of people. The litter and trash is a big problem, the litter and trash on the sidewalks and, and in back of the, the bar in that area. And there are drink cups that one finds, apparently because the patrons carrying these cups outside of Ellie's, onto the pavement and throwing them around, including throwing them onto one of my client's doorsteps. These have led to complaints by people, these problems have led to complaints by people who have invested their resources and their efforts to building their businesses and improving the economic climate of the City of Hudson. They include John Bender, who owns the home, kitchen, and bath store and the building in which it's located. They include Pete Foster, who owns Barker's and San Pedro Restaurants that are in that area. They include Bob Mosenko, who owns 401 Design and Seasons on St. Croix. These are people that are promoting the economic of welfare of Hudson and employing the citizens of Hudson in their business, and this is making it difficult for them to, affecting their profitability and infecting the value of their businesses and infecting the value of the buildings which they own. It's affected people that are, are solid citizens in the, the City of Hudson and reside in the area, such as my client Jerry Washburn, who's a teacher for a public local, Washington, the Stillwater School District, who lives across the street. It includes Jacqueline Geiger, who's employed, I believe, in marketing and who's been very active in the St. Pat's Community and other community affairs in Hudson. So these are citizens and businesses which are assets to the community, and they are people that haven't previously complained. Many of them have been in that area before Ellie's was in operation, and they didn't complain. They didn't complain about the previous businesses that were located in that particular space, and they moved, the people that reside there moved to that area, knowing full well they were living in an urban community, but things have changed to make it different than it was before. The business owners, and also I don't think I mentioned John Mingo, who owns the building in which he has invested a significant amount of money and who, and whose wife operates the Altissimo Salon. So this is a serious economic concern to people who have significant interests in this community, and that's the reason for bringing this before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll have a brief opening statement by the respondent.
Thank you, Mayor Knutson. When I was first presented with the summons and the complaints for a disorderly house, I have to be honest with you, I had to look it up, look up what a disorderly house exactly was, because it's something that we don't find in our law books, with the exception of one case, and that case is from many decades ago. And basically what a disorderly house is, according to the law, it's a house where the inhabitants are behaving so badly so as to constitute a public nuisance. And you ask yourself, what is a public nuisance? Well, a public nuisance is something that's regarded or is recognized in Wisconsin law as being something such as a condition or activity that substantially or unduly interferes with the use of the public place or activities of the entire community. In other words, we're dealing with serious things, serious problems. It's more than just a petty annoyance, it's more than a disturbance, it's more than a complaint. The statutes rank disorderly house up there with other unsavory, illegal activities, such as operating a bar without proper qualifications, operating a bar that has controlled substances, having an operator that's been convicted of trafficking drugs. We're dealing with things, some of the most serious things, some of the most serious violations that a bar owner or any business owner could do. Now, we intend to have a number of witnesses tonight. Two will be law enforcement officers. We'll have Chief Jensen and Sergeant Hartman come in to testify. They will talk about law enforcement's perspective on the issues with Ellie's, with the enforcement measures that they take, the cooperation that they have gotten from the operator over at Ellie's. They will also talk about the fact that things that Mr. Jacobson had described, such as litter, trash, and profanity, all happened before Ellie's. Apparently, they're going to present evidence that they're happening while Ellie's has been in operation, and probably they will continue to happen after Ellie's is long gone and some other business moves into the area. The fact is that the evidence, I think, will show you tonight that the problems or the things that the residents are complaining about are not isolated to Ellie's, they're not caused by Ellie's, but that is who they're pointing the finger at. We'll also have evidence from both Greg Elstrom and from Sharon Horn Elstrom, and they will provide you with insight as to what's going on inside Ellie's. You will hear about the, the training that their bar staff is put to, you'll hear about the qualifications and the experience of the operators. You hear about the security measures that the bar has put in place, such as bouncers, the number of bouncers that are in place. I think you'll hear testimony that they have upwards of six bouncers. And the purpose of these bouncers, you will hear, is to maintain order within the bar, to maintain a safe environment for the customers, and to maintain a safe environment for the workers. You'll hear that they have certain roles and responsibilities within the bar. They are to remain vigilant and watch the customers' behavior. And if something is inappropriate, they are to have a verbal confrontation with them first, and if things are not rectified or if things escalate, they are to remove that patron from the establishment so as to protect the safety of those that remain inside. In some of the most serious incidents, you will hear testimony that the bouncers or the operators will pick up the phone and they will call law enforcement themselves. They're not afraid of working with the police. In fact, they have embraced the police department. They are the only bar, I think you'll hear testimony to this fact, they are the only bar in Hudson that has a security camera monitoring the outside of their premises, and they give a direct feed to the police department. And you'll hear Mr. Elstrom talk about that, that any time, at any place, the police department can look and see what's going on outside of, outside of Ellie's on Main. In addition to the outside camera, Ellie's on Main also has internal cameras to keep track of what's going on, and if necessary, to record things, ensure it with law enforcement if they so should need. You'll also hear testimony that, under law, the operators of Ellie's have to remove people by two-thirty at night, on Saturdays and earlier on other days. But the fact is that some of the complaints that we're going to hear about tonight deal with things that happen after bar has closed, after these patrons have left Ellie's, and after they have left the control, at least the influence, of the bar owners. And regrettably, some people apparently use bad behavior, perhaps use inappropriate language, vomit, urinate, things of that type. But those are not things that the owners of Ellie's can control. Those are not things that the owners of Ellie's would encourage. And in fact, after two-thirty or after bar closing, that's something that they cannot help. They cannot let these people back into the establishment for any reason whatsoever. So while the, while I think it's very easy to point the finger at one particular bar, especially a neighbor, I think that when you hear all of the evidence, you will come to the conclusion that Ellie's runs a clean operation, that this is a good environment, a safe environment, and while people may be able to select isolated incidences, one or two anecdotes here or there, the vast majority of the customers behave themselves, the vast majority of the customers at Ellie's are law-abiding respectable citizens. And this isn't something or providing grounds for the city council to take any action against the license. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll have witnesses by the complainant. The witnesses are going to be sworn. So would you please call your first witness?
My name is Jerry Washburn. I live at four-twenty-four and a half, Second Street, directly across from, well, almost directly across from Ellie's.
Would you like me to proceed with asking?
Yes.
Okay, I get to ask you questions.
You get to ask me questions.
Thank you. Jerry, you said you live right across the street from Ellie's?
Yes, I do.
How long have you lived there?
About a year and a half.
And what's your occupation?
I'm a teacher.
And where?
At Oakland Junior High in the Stillwater District.
How long have you been a teacher?
Fifteen years.
Jerry, could you tell what problems you've had that you have associated with Ellie's?
As we've talked, and I've put in my formal complaint, my complaint is mostly a noise And that noise complaint is, is both in level and, as you mentioned in your opening statement, tone. It is, I do live right across the street, I have windows facing Ellie's, I have the luck or unfortunate, misfortune to, to watch because I have an office right there with my windows, it's a cool breeze if it's available. But I do see and hear people coming out of Ellie's. The, the door is almost always open if it's decent weather in the front. The music is loud coming out of Ellie's. I can hear it very easily. As I mentioned, in the past, I could very easily dance with the music if I were desiring to do so.
Has it affected your ability to sleep at night?
I have, originally, when I first moved to the apartment, I had my bedroom in the front, and I recognized right away that that was not going to be possible. So I moved my bedroom to the back of the apartment, and yes, I'm consistently woken up. And it is, it's, it's bar time. I, I think it's a little disingenuous for the, the, the bar to say that they have no responsibility for those people, that they, they serve heavy quantities of alcohol, and then at two-fifteen, bar time, they turn them loose and they have no responsibility for those people. Yet I pay the price for that. I'm constantly awakened at bar time by profanity, by loud yelling, cat calls. It's obnoxious. And I, I live there, I know that is coming straight from Ellie's. It's not from somewhere down the street, it is coming from Ellie's.
Do you have a office in your home?
I do.
And what about that, does it affect your use of your office?
It certainly does. I, the office is, is in the front, and I, at that time of night, I just have to close it down and do something else. I often do, it's also my entertainment place, that's where I have my computer, if I'm going to be up watching a movie or something like that, and if I, even with the windows closed, I have to resort to using headphones so that I can properly hear what I'm listening to.
And have you had to call the police?
I have. And again, I have, the, the time that I'm thinking of, I called the police because there were patrons who had left Ellie's and were harassing a woman on the street. I, I called the police and said, you know, you've got to, you know, come and do something about this, and it continued. And so I'm, I'm on the second floor, so I went down myself just to try and provide some presence, and the situation ended. I don't know if it was, had anything to do with my presence or not, but it is not a, an isolated incident. Again, I'm right there, I watch people coming out of the bar consistently staggering. I, almost any weekend, I can watch and see people turning into doorways of businesses and throwing up. The next day, I consistently have litter across the street and in the back by the parking lot. And again, yes, some of that could come from one of the other bars in town, but I know specifically a good deal of it comes from Ellie's. I'm there, I'm watching.
And do you go out in the morning?
I do.
Do you see, what do you see when you go out for a walk and?
I, I have a small dog that I walk often, and often in the morning, what we have is where we go around, we try and police our area a little bit, and we pick up the cups and various other things. Again, I'm sure some of those come from other places, although, from what I understand, they are the types of plastic cups that Ellie's uses. But frequently, there is the, the vomit. I, I, you know, I have to yank my dog away because he would enjoy that more than I think he should. But it's a consistent, it really does look at, you know, the value of Hudson. I, I just don't think that is what we want here.
Is there anything else that you would like to add to what you've said?
Just general comments of, the attorney was talking of the six bouncers and all the other things that Ellie's is doing to try and mitigate. Why does it need six bouncers? Why do we constantly have to have a, a strong back-and-forth relationship with the Hudson Police Department? Why? Is that, is that, should that be the norm for a liquor license holder in the City of Hudson? I just don't believe that that is what we want in Hudson. I don't think it is. And I, I hope that the, the city council will take that into consideration.
You've submitted a statement to the, to the City of Hudson, which we've marked as exhibit five, and I'm just going to show it to you so that you can see it again. Is, is the information that you provided true and accurate?
Yes, please.
Okay, I don't have further questions.
Okay, thank you. Then the respondent has an opportu-
Cross-examination?
Cross-examination, so if you'd stay there for a minute.
I thought you'd said, thank you.
While I did, but I meant to Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you. Mr. Washburn, you said you've lived in the current location for one and a half years, if I heard correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so when you moved in, you must have known that Ellie's was a bar and was operating across the street?
Sure.
And you must have also known that there are other establishments in the area, correct?
Yes.
Such as Pudge's to the south and Dibbo's to the north, correct?
Yes.
As well as Dick's Bar, correct?
Mm-hmm.
As well as a number of other restaurants that serve alcohol, correct?
Yes.
And it sounds like one of the, your main concern was, was really the, the noise, the level and the, and the tone of the noise. Did I hear that correctly? Have you, have you done anything like contact the owner of Ellie's or gone over and say, gee whiz, I wish the, the noise could be kept down a little bit?
I made a complaint to the Hudson City Council.
Okay. So you, you never went across the street to talk to your neighbor about the problem?
It's generally not a time when I want to go down to Ellie's and make a complaint. Quite frankly, with the door being open- Quite frankly, with the door being open at that time, my feeling is that what that does, is it extends the kind of property and the bar of Ellie's out into the streets. So there are generally groups of people in the same state of inebriation, maybe six, eight, ten, sitting outside of the bar on the street, doing what, I don't know. But no, I don't feel particularly comfortable going down and making a complaint at that time.
You said that the patrons were at differing levels of inebriation. Are you suggesting that all of Ellie's patrons are inebriated? Or did you misspeak?
I don't know. Certainly, I'm not able to judge that. I certainly can judge those that I talked about, that I see.
Okay.
I've been in the restaurant business my own, myself, for more than 25 years. I think I know when I can see someone walking, stumbling, the speech, yeah, I think I can tell.
So if I heard you correctly, perhaps the people, some people that you've seen have been, in your opinion, intoxicated, but you can't speak to the other people, say, inside the bar?
I would suggest that Ellie's has a liquor license and they serve liquor very well. I've been there, I know they do that very well. So I would guess, depending on what you consider inebriated, and I think the state, as far as driving, has that 0.8 percent alcohol limit, how many beers does it take someone inside to be inebriated? I would suggest that a good percentage of the people, I would suggest by what they do.
That's based on your speculation?
No, based on what Ellie's does.
Okay. So getting back to the issue of the complaints, though, you talked about how when you're awoken, you don't want to get up in the middle of the night and go across the street. But how about the next?
I have.
Okay, hold on a second, I'm not finished with the question. But how about, say, the next day or a couple days later, during a lunch hour or in the early evening, ever gone over to the owner and say, "Mr. Owner, the noise at night is bothering me, could you do something about that?" You've never done that, have you?
I don't, I don't know that the owner is on site, as far as I understand, the owner is not on site.
But you've never even made the effort, have you?
Made the effort? I don't think as a citizen that it's, I guess what I would say is, I don't think that the effort would have been fruitful. But to answer your question, no, I have not done that.
Okay. Now, you talked about the vomit that you found on the sidewalk and story about your dog and stuff like that. You would agree that you don't know who vomited on the sidewalk, correct?
Correct.
And you don't know where they came from, correct?
I don't personally know the people, but I know that some of the people have been from Ellie's. Yes, because I have, I have actually, I sit there, I can see, as I mentioned in questions before, yes, I've seen people several times step into corners, into doorways, and throw up.
Okay. And you're certain those people came from Ellie's?
Yes.
Okay. And how many people, what several, one or two?
I would say about four times in the time that I've lived there.
Okay. So four times in a year and a half?
Yes. That I've actually seen someone vomit.
And you don't know where these people were before they were at Ellie's, correct?
Correct.
They could have been at any number of other bars, correct?
Certainly.
They could have been at gas stations, correct? You wouldn't fault the gas station just because they happened to be in their establishment, true?
I wouldn't think they would be drinking at the gas station.
Well, and you don't know that they were vomiting because they were drinking, do you?
Would you like to speculate some other reason? If I were to, again...
My simple question is, do you don't know that they were vomiting because they had been drinking? Yes or no?
I would say there's about a 99 percent chance, yes, that they were drinking.
And what do you base that on?
Because I'm watching them. I'm watching them, and I, again, I've been in the restaurant business half my life. I think I recognize when someone is staggering down the street from a bar and they turn into a corner and vomit, I don't assume it's vertigo.
And you don't know if they consumed any alcohol while they were in Ellie's, correct? They could have been intoxicated before they arrived at Ellie's.
Again, it could have been vertigo.
Could have been that they were sick.
What do you think? Could have been. I think at the time, certainly, they are sick.
Could have had the flu. But I guess my point to you, sir, is that you don't know that they became intoxicated at Ellie's, true?
I know that they became, I believe very strongly that they became intoxicated. And I also believe that they were at Ellie's.
Thank you.
Okay, since this is our first witness for the council, let me just say that there, our role here is to hear the evidence and make a decision based on the evidence that we hear. It is possible for you to ask questions of witnesses, but in asking the question, you don't want to introduce any evidence yourself. So you don't want to introduce your opinion, any facts or findings that you might have outside of what the witness said. The purpose would be to ask factual questions of the witness that you didn't get out of the testimony, what, why, where, when, how, type of fact-based questions. Does anyone have a question for Mr. Washburn before he's finished? Okay, next witness.
Jacqueline Geiger.
Thank you, Mr. Washburn.
Good evening, City Council.
Just a moment, and we'll have you sworn, and then we'll start with the questions.
Would you state your name, please?
Jackie Geiger.
What's your address?
412 and a half Second Street, Main Street.
Where is that in relationship to Ellie's on Main?
It's pretty much across the street. I live across the street directly from Barker's, and I live above the Home Kitchen and Bath Store.
How long have you lived there?
Three and a half years.
Did you live there before Ellie's on Main opened?
Yes.
Have you noticed any changes in the area since Ellie's has opened in 2007?
Yes.
What changes have you noticed?
The clientele coming from Ellie's uses a lot of loud language, inappropriate language, vulgar language. Noise level certainly has increased from people being on the street since Ellie's opened. Additionally, the behavior that some of, has already been brought up, the urinating, public urination, and vomiting from the clientele that visit Ellie's.
Has it affected your ability to sleep at night?
Yes.
And could you describe that, please?
Yes, because of the loud noise and the exchange of profanity continuing throughout the evening hours up until 3 o'clock in the morning, it has caused me several nights where I've not been able to sleep.
What is your occupation, by the way?
I'm a product marketing manager.
And where are you employed?
Department 56, it's in Eden Prairie.
Now, have you noticed any evidence of vulgar behavior by the patrons of Ellie's?
Yes, I've witnessed people leaving Ellie's and urinating in public. I've called the police on several occasions for that. If they've stayed in the area long enough, several times, I'll grab my phone and they'll already be gone. But the police have come and dealt with that situation, and I've witnessed that they've even written tickets. So it certainly has happened. I've also witnessed people vomiting on the sidewalk or on my patio and then going into Ellie's.
Have these things happened before Ellie's opened?
No.
Have you witnessed fighting?
Yes.
What have you seen in that regard?
There've been several fights on the street, particularly after the bar closes. At one time, somebody fell down in the middle of the fight, and they were unable to get up, and their friends were genuinely concerned because this person wasn't moving, and so the police were called for that incident. Another time, there was a woman who was, seemed very distressed, she was in a fight with a man, and I feared for her safety, and for that reason, I called the police, just for her own protection.
Where did that take place?
It was in the parking lot that is between my building and the adjacent building on the east side of Second Street.
Have, I want to show you some photographs that we've marked as exhibits. One is Exhibit Nine, Ten, Eleven, and Twelve. Let's start with Exhibit Nine, could you tell us what that is?
This is the sidewalk that runs along the edge of the Home Kitchen and Bath Store. It's the sidewalk that's in front of my front door.
Is that public or private property?
This would be considered private property. It's owned by John Bender, who owns the store, and it does not, there are no doors that the public would use along this sidewalk.
Have you seen any urine or vomit in that area in the morning?
Yes, certainly.
Let me show you Exhibit Eleven, could you tell us what that is?
That's the patio that's a part of my apartment.
And what about, is that private property?
Yes, it is.
What about in that area, have you found, what have you found there with regard to urine and vomit?
I've witnessed people urinating there, and I've witnessed people, I've witnessed one person throwing up, and I have found vomit there on another occasion.
And take a look at Exhibit Twelve, could you tell us what that is?
Again, a part of the patio area of this apartment.
Have you seen urine or vomit in that area?
Yes, this is the area that I've witnessed the vomiting, witnessed the urinating, and found vomit on another occasion.
And then we have, let me see, going back to Exhibit Nine, there's what appears to be on the wall, is that indeed an air conditioner?
That's an air conditioner that is used for the store, and it's supported by metal brackets.
And Exhibit Ten, is this the same air conditioner?
Yes.
What have you noticed regarding, well, first of all, did you have a problem with that particular air conditioner?
Not with the air conditioner, but with one of the patrons of Ellie's climbed it one evening, just for entertainment and fun.
And if we look at Exhibit Ten, can we see evidence of the fact that somebody got up on it?
It looks to be somewhat damaged, and I know the owner of the store claimed that that damage had not been there prior to that.
And what is that? Where is that air conditioner in relationship to your apartment?
It's right near one of the windows, and so I could hear that this was happening. I was concerned for my own safety and called the police on that occasion.
How would you describe your, the effect that this has had on your life? The problems that have originated from Ellie's?
Well, it's frustrating because, you know, so many evenings are very disruptive. The other effect that it's had is that I can't have out-of-town guests at my apartment any longer. I used to have family that would come and spend the night there, and after one sleepless night last spring, they decided they, you know, wouldn't be able to stay with me any longer. And then I would say that, you know, just overall, to see this happening to the city of Hudson is disheartening. As I said in my letter, this, you know, these types of incidences, this behavior, didn't occur, I didn't observe it prior to Ellie's opening, and so to see our downtown area turn into a place where this continues and seems to get worse has been probably the thing that's concerning me the most.
Are you a single woman?
Yes.
Live alone?
Yes.
Is there anything else you'd like to add at this point? Any other matter, problems or concerns which we haven't gone through?
No.
Now, you gave a statement which was marked as Exhibit Six, you submitted to the council. Was that statement accurate?
Yes.
I have no further questions, thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to cross-examine?
Yes, just very briefly. Ms. Geiger, did I pronounce that right?
It's Geiger.
Geiger. The things that you have talked about tonight include the noise, the language, some public urination and vomiting, correct?
Along with witnessing the fighting and then the climbing air conditioners for sport.
The, now, the, the public urination that you had talked about, did you actually see people, or do you see the remnants of it the next?
No, I've seen people on many occasions.
Okay. And this is obviously happening outside the bar, correct?
Yes.
Right. As with the vomiting, correct?
Yes.
And have you ever been inside Ellie's on Main?
No.
So you wouldn't be able to comment as far as what's going on inside?
No.
And you would agree that these are patrons or former patrons that at one time have left the bar and are outside the presence of the owners and the operators, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, any council member have a question? All right, Ms. Geiger, thank you. Any other witnesses?
Yes, John Mingo. Do you have one's warrant?
Answer.
Please, your attorney, please. He's trying to tell the truth, he wants to tell the truth, so help him God.
Could you state your name and address, please?
My name is John Mingo. I live at 112 Walnut Street, Hudson, Wisconsin.
Where do you live in relationship to Ellie's?
We share the alley, I guess. They're relatively right behind me slightly to the east.
Okay, how long have you lived at that location?
I've owned the building since 1998 and had a business in there since 19, or since 2001, and I've held residence there since 2007.
Now, is there a deck out the back of Ellie's?
Is there?
Yes.
Yes.
And is there a stairway that leads from the deck down to the ground or alleyway behind Ellie's?
Yes.
Have you experienced problems which were created by Ellie's?
Yes.
Did those problems include noise?
Yes.
Could you explain those problems?
Well, noise level is a little more relative to me because it's 25 feet from my bedroom window. The City Council decided to allow that to occur with a statement to me that you live in a commercial district, so you can, it's pretty much known. I've made one complaint about Ellie's on noise to the police, and all the time I've lived there, why? Because I've been told I live in a commercial district, I have no right to complain.
Yeah.
So the one time I did complain was the first night the deck was allowed occupancy, and they had their back door open, the music blaring so loud, and people were dancing and singing, and elevated all the other noise, and it was 1:30, or 20 to 12 when I finally called, or 20 to 1 when I finally called the police. And the reason I called the police is because I called the bar and they didn't answer their phone. I think the music might have been loud, but, and so I told the police, tell them I called, you know? And I also called Brian, the owner of the building, to let him know the next day that it was me that called the police and that I'd like to talk to him about what's going on with the music side of the deck. I've not received a call back.
Has the problem improved since you spoke with him?
No.
Has it gotten worse?
Well, I won't say that. The music doesn't be, seem quite as loud since that occurrence. There are nights when it is, but there's still music on the deck, and I was told by the mayor personally that there is no music allowed on the deck, so.
Are there speakers on the deck? Have you observed?
Yeah, as of June 4th, speakers are now present on the deck.
Were there speakers there before?
Not prior to June 4th.
Oh, June 4 was, since June 4, there have been speakers on the deck?
There, yeah, there are, there are exterior speakers now, where before it was just the door itself was open, which allowed the music to come out and play.
Yeah. And have you had any problem with people? And have you had any problem with people, patrons, coming from Ellie's?
The only occurrence we've really had an issue with was, well, one morning that we found the cup, a drink cup on our front doorstep, which you can't just, you have to either throw it, or you have to walk up the steps and put it there. It's, it's a, you know, a good 10 feet and five steps to come up, and it's very private property, and you have to know that it's not public, so why that was there, I don't know. There's pictures.
Yeah, I, I'll show you the photos that have been marked as Exhibits 13 and 14. Could you tell us what that is?
Well, that's my front door in number 13, and that, that's the drink cup, and that's the close-up of the drink cup, which is, as best I could tell, the same as Ellie's drink cups, so, and it was found at 6:30 in the morning on, I don't know the date, so it was about a month and a half, or six weeks, two or five weeks ago, something like that. No, actually, the date's on there. I'll tell you when it was. I believe it says May 8. I can't read it on my glasses. Yeah, May 8, which is a Saturday morning. I don't, I don't really have, I, I've witnessed people coming from the deck, going behind my garage and urinating. I've, you know, I've had those issues, but I, I have to be honest, they're not the only bar in town I have that issue with. However, you know, with their proximity to me, that's happening more and more. But my issue is really more about the vulgar language on the deck. I have witnessed all the words that you've seen in your report, just Sunday night, some guy, I know how big he is, 6'1", 270 pounds, because he said, "F the B," loud enough while I was walking my dog for me to exit, you know, I was gonna call the police, but you know, it's hard for us to call the police on people, like, for me it is. They have a right to be in business, as far as I'm concerned, to a certain extent within the laws. This is, this is a situation where, man, if I had a minor child with me, I'd have the cops there in a heartbeat. But I'm not a minor, and I'm not nearly as offended as a minor would be, but I'd invite all of you to come and hang out at my porch, and he's right here Saturday night, and listen to the language that comes off at that. Basically, what's happened is you push the bar from inside to outside, but the language can't carry with that, and it does, and they do nothing about it.
And have you seen trash and vomit in the mornings?
Yeah, here and there. Again, I'm not down there watching people do whatever they're doing, and I don't know who, where they're coming from. That alley is such a transit area, I can't prove that it was Ellie's or not Ellie's, so.
And what about, have you noticed whether they keep a licensed operator on the stairway?
Yeah, that's my other biggest issue. My complaints are pretty simple, and they're all based on there. I was told again by the mayor that they're required to have a, a operator on that deck when there's occupancy of that deck. The very first night they were open, that same Thursday night that I complained, there was at least 20 people on that deck, and there was not a licensed operator, and at that time, I don't believe there was a camera either. So, and it's a pretty common occurrence to see Wednesday nights after 9:00 have the operator, because that's ladies' night, and it's five bucks for drinks for ladies for all night or whatever, and then Friday and Saturdays when their bigger crowds come, and they'll have them out there. But there is a lot of times yesterday when that guy was swearing, and, or Sunday, yeah. And then I also witnessed two people on the deck doing a gyration thing. It's like, come on, you guys, this is getting ridiculous. And again, if that camera's doing their, the job, then somebody should have come out there and said, "Stop this." And the police, if you're monitoring that, why didn't you see it? It was in the camera view.
What do you mean by gyration?
Well, I don't want to get too explicit. Basically, the girl was around the guy. He was up against the railing, and they were doing what you might think they would be doing, so. That's the kind of stuff that bugs me. The noise at 2:00 in the morning, it's the "hoo-hoo's" that really get you. It's a constant noise, doesn't bother you as much. I have a fan now, I'm putting in windows to block the noise. I'm going to an expense on my side to help that, but I don't, they say they want to work with us, and we've talked, but it doesn't seem to go both ways.
You do the talking, but they don't see?
Well, we talk about things, and then, then when, like the complaint, I never got a call back about that, and they continue to do what they do, so, and now they put the speakers out there, which, I, to me, that's blatant disregard for the ordinance. Or the agreement?
Disregard for the minutes, what's in the minutes?
Right.
I think we've marked as an exhibit. The Exhibit One. Now, anything else you'd like to add at this point?
No, I don't, I don't know. Like I say, it's hard for me to call the police if I know that that's the only way that we're gonna get this to be a controlled environment so that it's good for everybody in the area, then I'm gonna start calling the cops every day when things are occurring. I know, I'll get a, I'll get a recorder and record the noises, I'll get this, I'll get that, but that's what we have to do to make it a better environment. I don't want them to not have a business as far as operating a good business within our community, but they have, they have to realize that deck is outside, and it does. And if I remember, and when I read the ordinances last night, it says, you know, any noise that causes a nuisance to me personally, and alleyways, and it doesn't say in a commercial district, it has no wording of that kind, so I don't know why people keep telling me that. It's a commercial district.
Yeah. Now, the statement that you presented, or gave, which has been marked as Exhibit Four, was that accurate, true and accurate?
Yes. Anything that I wrote is accurate.
Now, you're the, you own the building, is that right?
I do.
And your wife operates a hair salon, right?
We have a hair salon.
And what do you do for an occupation?
I'm a project manager for an IT company.
I have no further questions.
Okay. Would you like to cross-examine?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mingo, I'll be just very brief here. It sounds like your, your biggest concern is the, the noise level. Is that a fair statement?
No, not just the noise level, it's the vulgarity of the noise.
Okay. Well, let's, let's break these down then, with the, well, wait, back up for a second. One thing you mentioned is that you hear the, the singing, the dancing, and the music, correct?
Yeah, again, there's not supposed to be music.
But, I mean, there's nothing illegal about the singing, the dancing, and the music, correct?
I don't know. That's for the city council to answer that, because as far as I know, that was the agreement to the license, so I would say that the answer to that is yes, it is.
Well, there's a question about whether they can have speakers out there, right?
No, it's whether they can have music out there. I was told no music on the deck. So that's my complaint.
Okay. But I mean, people singing, that's, you wouldn't agree, or you would agree that that's not something?
People are singing? I'm not, I can't say they can't sing. I didn't say that.
And, and regrettably, in our society today, some people use vulgar language, correct?
Yeah, but guess what? It's in a controlled environment, and they should control it.
But one of your complaints is asking for either suspension or revocation of a liquor license.
Yeah, you know, I know why? If they get suspended, now they have to cooperate because the next time they lose it.
And in your opinion, does the bar have control over what people say?
Yes. They have control over who's in their bar, how much they're drinking, how much they're serving, and kicking them out when the language gets out of hand. It's the same thing, if I keep telling people on my parking lot where they're illegally parking, eventually they'll stop parking there.
And what would be the standard for throwing people out? How do we know what language would be?
What's vulgar language? Ask the city council what the statute is. I don't know that, that's why I listed all those words. I don't know what the statute is.
I mean, you are aware there's a First Amendment, correct?
Yes, I am.
And you can't offer a workable standard that Ellie's could use for determining what's vulgar language worthy of having somebody thrown out of an establishment for inappropriate language?
Do you have children?
I'm asking you a question.
I'm, I'm gonna give you my answer. Do you have children? How old are they?
You can't be arguing that before.
I can't? Well, what's appropriate for a 13-year-old to hear, what's appropriate for a 6-year-old to hear, what's appropriate for an 18-year-old to hear? They are different standards, and what standard is this city standing by? That's my question to you.
Finally, answer the question.
My answer? That's my standard.
I'll move on.
You know, you can move the people into the bar if they want to get rowdy, so.
Well, I think we're waiting for another question here.
You talked about the, the drink cup you found on your doorstep?
Yep.
You didn't see who put that cup there, did you?
Nope.
And you have no way of knowing that it came from an Ellie's customer?
Other than it's the same cups they use, no.
Did it have their name on it?
I said it, I don't know that it's their, I, I'm making the assumption from the location and the fact that they drink out of identical cups at their, at their deck, and I know Dix doesn't. There you go.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, hold, hold it there. Any questions from the council? I want you to help refresh my memory and clarify one thing. You talked about conversations that we had. Did we have more than one conversation?
No, we had a singular conversation.
One time you came here and met with me at City Hall?
Yes, it was immediately after the, the allowance of the building of the deck.
So would that have been on the morning of September 25, 2009?
Very possibly. I don't know the exact date. It was me and Pete Foster.
Did I tell you anything different than what was in the meeting minutes from September 8 of 2009? You reviewed Exhibit One.
Uh, you'd have to refresh my memory. I, I, the, the things that we clarified was the music on the deck, what's going to be allowed, what's not. In fact, I thought you even said in that meeting that they weren't supposed to be able to use the steps as an entrance and exit. Obviously, I was wrong or misinterpreted you saying whatever you said there, so, but I do recall you saying that music is not to be allowed on the deck, which, for me, was a big part of it, because it's just more of a party zone with the music. As it is, the party zone from midnight to 2:30 is pretty loud. Again, how many kind of times have I complained? You know? This is my complaint. This is my voice. I don't call the cops every other night, so, plus the police have not been able to give me a whole lot of answer to what is excessive noise, so.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Do you have another witness?
I do.
Are you sorry to tell the truth, but you have to submit the address?
I do.
Could you state your full name, please?
Robert Mosenko.
And what's your address?
918 11th Street, Hudson, Wisconsin.
And have you filed a complaint about Ellie's?
Yes, I did.
And your concerns? Or could you tell us what your concerns are?
Well, my concern is that over the last couple of years, we have, as you've heard from other witnesses, we are, let's say, the recipient of, of the vomit and the entrance to our business. We are recipient of the urination, we are recipient of the litter and all those types of things, and since the deck has opened up, we also now have it at the back of the building in our parking lot area. You know, so I, I, it, it's clear to me that this is the manifestation of activity that is coming out of Ellie's Bar, and, you know, I guess we wanted to at least express our concerns about this. I think the thing that I'm finding more concerned with is that for eight years, we were next to another establishment that we encountered the same types of activities, and for eight years, we endured the vomit, the pee, the litter, the beer cups, and you name it. We also experienced extreme damage to our property. Those big glass windows cost about $1,000 each, and when you start replacing about nine or 10 of them, it adds up, plus the loss of merchandise on the inside. So as I start to see the vomit and the pee and the litter on, now, on this side of the street, it's like, here we go again. So my concern has to do with what is happening to the downtown area to maintain control over the public traffic that is there. I think, as has been said, I think that everyone just wants to have a good neighbor, someone that we have confidence in is going to try to help enforce the behavior of their clientele and protect the businesses and the people that are on the streets, and that does not seem to be occurring. And so that's part of the concern that we have.
What is your business?
I, I'm the building manager for the building on the corner of, of Second Street, and it was a commercial, and so we're right on the corner there.
And the name?
Pardon?
What is the name?
The name of, well, the name of my business is Seasons on St. Croix. And then we have many other tenants in the building also.
Okay. All right. I have no further questions.
I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Mosenko, I was reading your complaint, and it talks about, you know, enduring bad behavior, damaged litter, and stuff like that, from the late-night bar crowd that departs from several establishments. Is it correct to say that your concerns relate to not just Ellie's, but the larger bar?
I'm referring to the letter that I wrote, what was it, last September?
September of 2009.
Yes. In that context, I was referring to, you know, some specific bars in downtown Hudson, correct? Of which I was lumping Ellie in as a part of that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all right.
Any council member have any questions? All right. Thank you. Any other witnesses?
I have one more witness, Pete Foster. Could you state your name and address, please?
Home address?
Yes.
Pete Foster, 323 Galahad Road.
Where's that located?
That's located in North Hudson.
And what is your occupation?
I'm the owner and operator of Barker's Bar and Grill and the San Pedro Cafe, along with a partner.
And they're located close to Ellie's Bar?
Yes. Barker's is right next door, 413 Second Street, which is right to the south. And San Pedro Cafe is across the street, a little bit more to the north.
How long have you worked at Barker's?
Uh, well, I started working at Barker's in college, 1989, and then came into ownership capacity in July 1, 1996.
Okay. How long, you've owned it since 1996?
Yes.
And, so you were working at Barker's and long before Ellie's Bar opened?
Yes.
And you've continued to work there up to the present time, obviously?
Correct.
Have you noticed problems since Ellie's opened?
Substantial problems.
Could you tell us what those consist of?
Sure. Well, prior to Ellie's opening, I believe they opened in August of 2007, we didn't see many problems occur until right around February of 2008, which is when they, it looked like started to, to do a little bit more volume, and it's gotten progressively worse since February of '08, in terms of the amount of vomit on my front doorstep, on my benches, on the front of my building, blood from fights, urine, full beverage cups, empty beverage cups, you know? There's been a number of instances that we've had, I shouldn't say a number, there's been two instances in particular where there's been patrons from Ellie's trying to headbutt their way through my front window at about 2:00 AM. Luckily, my cleaning service was there, did witness them coming out of, from the direction of Ellie's. I can't say he saw them come out of Ellie's, but putting two and two together, that, that would make sense. I've also witnessed a lot of extreme intoxication. I've witnessed a very profane vulgar language. I've witnessed one in particular bar fight where, in fact, it was about 4:30 PM, maybe 5 o'clock PM. It was not after bar closed, it was in the middle of our dinner hour. There was individuals out there using really, really bad language in front of kids anywhere from two, two, three years old on up, because we did have, fortunately, we did have a good dinner crowd that evening. We had people waiting out front, elderly people, and got many comments after, after that incident inside of my restaurant, questioning what is going on downtown here.
And what was going on on the sidewalk to disturb these people?
There was a fight inside of Ellie's Bar in the middle of the afternoon. Fortunately, I was down in my office, and I had gotten, one of my employees was out back, said that someone yelled out of Ellie's bar fight, you know, let's, let's go, and so of course I ran up to the front, and Brian Elstrom and his contractor people people fortunately were there to, um, to contain this fight. But again, uh, it was, uh, not a situation in which, um, I was happy with, uh, just because of my customers were out there and having to witness that.
When did that incident happen?
Oh, I'd say it was, uh, within the last ninety days. I, I don't know the exact date.
Now, uh, I'm, we've marked as exhibit photographs that have, uh, number fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, no, and then through twenty-nine. Did you take a lot of those, please? Did you take those photographs?
I took, uh, looks like a large majority of them. Um, uh, a few of them were taken by, uh, my opening, uh, management staff in which I did instruct for them to take photos if there was any vomit, urine, garbage, et cetera, out front. And, and they, um, they, they are to email those to me.
And let's start with a figure, uh, seven fifteen. Could you tell us what that depicts?
That's urine on the front of Ellie's building and the sidewalk.
And, uh, sixteen?
It's like vomit.
Where's that located?
That's located, um, it looks like on the, uh, north, uh, side of Ellie's right next to, I believe, Lillian's purse shop.
And what is seventeen?
Seventeen is more vomit on the tree, which is, uh, right, uh, you can see the, um, the brown colored paver blocks to the right on that picture. That's my sidewalk where it meets, um, Ellie's sidewalk in that tree.
And eighteen?
Eighteen looks to me like a shoe and possibly a brassiere.
Where is that picture?
That's right at Ellie's front door. And I believe this picture, I believe this picture was taken along with exhibit nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, which just happened to be one of the, um, biggest, um, weekends for, um, it was tour of, a tour of homes type weekend. And this was, I believe, on either Saturday morning or Sunday morning of that, um, of that, uh, weekend when we are trying to impress out of town customers to come in and spend money in our town.
What's exhibit nineteen?
That's blood and it looks like, um, either police or EMT gloves.
Where's that? You have to say where that's.
Sorry, that's directly in front of Ellie's.
And take, uh, photo of twenty?
Twenty is the same picture, different angle.
Twenty-one?
Same picture, different.
Again, the blood and EMT gloves.
Blood, EMT gloves, right in front of Ellie's, correct.
And, uh, twenty-two?
Twenty-two is, uh, miscellaneous garbage and, uh, uh, empty drink cups, table tents, uh, promoting, uh, whatever they're doing in there for, um, you know, for their beverage promotion right at the front step of Ellie's.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three, uh, is a full beverage cup and an empty beverage cup, uh, along with some garbage, um, which indicates to me, obviously, someone was drinking beer outside the licensed premises.
Again, in front of Ellie's?
In front of Ellie's, correct.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four, this was just taken, uh, within the last week. Just to show, I guess, the lack of, um, the lack of maintaining a clean and professional storefront, which I know we're not here to discuss, but that's something that I feel very strongly about.
And twenty-five?
Twenty-five, looks like it's a picture in the fall, um, of another, um, three-quarter full beverage cup along with some garbage.
Out front of Ellie's?
Out front of Ellie's, correct.
On the sidewalk?
On the sidewalk, correct.
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six is, uh, uh, a morning following, uh, a weekend evening at Ellie's. Um, and again, um, not what I think we want. People that live in our town or people are coming to our town to, uh, to enjoy what we have to offer. That's not exactly what I consider, um, being respectful and running a, a clean operation.
And what, could you tell us what, uh, twenty-seven shows?
Twenty-seven, um, shows the newly completed, uh, deck here at Ellie's just was taken, uh, again, within the last week. Um, and I believe that picture was taken because, um, I wanted to, um, show the council that, um, I believe, uh, there was, uh, discussion of Ellie's, um, needing or required, being required to improve the, the, the dilapidated state of the stucco falling off the building. Um, and the same twenty-eight, I can't be certain that, that was a provision of, um, the council granting the liquor license extension to cover the, the deck area. But, um, again, it's, it's something that, uh, has been talked about and, um, to this point, nothing's been done.
Uh, Mr. Foster, are the problems with the trash, the vomit, the urination, vulgarity of the patrons on the sidewalk, are those problems, uh, regular and consistent?
They are now. Since about, uh, as I said, February two thousand eight is when we really started to see, uh, problems develop as they got busier.
Uh, now, have you ever previously, uh, made complaints about the business that occupied the space where Ellie's is now located?
Never. Uh, there's been, you know, I can't, um, I can't tell you an exact number of businesses that have occupied that storefront, but, uh, as a lot of you folks know that have been, um, in the downtown Hudson area for, for years, uh, can attest to the fact that it's been a revolving door there. There's been many, many concepts, uh, both restaurants and bars, um, in that space. And no, I have never had an issue with any of them over the past fourteen years.
And why are you re, raising these concerns at this point?
I'm raising these concerns because I am afraid of the path that we are going down, uh, we are going down as it concerns to the, um, or as it relates to the, uh, overall, uh, environment and vitality of downtown Hudson and its businesses and its residents. Um, there has been a number of people that have spoke tonight and many more people that haven't spoke tonight that have poured their hearts and their souls and a lot of their resources into improving the, the whole scope of the downtown area. You know, really, really, um, making it, uh, the type of historical downtown, river town that we can be proud of, that we can promote, that we can, uh, count on a, a, a great spike in business over the summer months with our, uh, with our tourists, uh, and, and as always, uh, the, the, the bread and butter of, uh, any of our businesses are the residents that live here, uh, year round. And, and, you know, that is, you know, why I am concerned about what is happening at Ellie's.
Are you raising concerns because you're worried about competition?
Absolutely not. I know that, um, there's been a number of people that have voiced their opinions, um, uh, saying that, uh, Barker's and/or San Pedro, uh, our only motivation is, is trying to stop the competition. Now, anyone that's stepped foot in either Barker's or San Pedro Cafe, can attest to the fact that it's not the same clientele that frequents Ellie's. Barker's, you know, seventy-nine point eight percent of my sales are food. San Pedro Cafe, a little bit, bit over eighty-two percent of my gross sales are food. We're not a liquor bar. We don't survive on alcohol sales. Whereas from what I can tell, that's Ellie's main, uh, function, which is fine. That everybody's got a right to, uh, make a living and pay the bills. However, there are many, many responsible and respectful business owners, i.e. dicks, uh, pudges, as Mr. Mosenko said. I haven't had any problems with or seen anything, um, happening there. But Dibbo's, um, there are a number of, um, operations downtown Hudson that would be considered much more direct competition to Ellie's, um, that seems to, uh, keep their house in order and keep things cleaned up, respect their neighbors, and, um, unfortunately, uh, it's not happening at Ellie's.
And in fact, if there were to be a different business in that space other than Ellie's, might that business actually be competition to you?
Absolutely. I could be chewing my own arm off, in effect, uh, if, uh, this liquor license was to be, uh, revoked, uh, from Ellie's. And I had a, an operation that came in there and served burgers and sandwiches or seafood and pasta, absolutely, um, I would feel that. And, um, so, yes, that is, that is correct.
And do you feel that these problems affect your ability and other people, other businesses in the area's ability to continue to employ the residents of Hudson?
I'm sorry, please state that.
Yeah, do you feel like that it affects your business in a financial way and other businesses in a financial way, these problems?
It certainly has a potential to, yes. And I believe that, um, if we continue to go down this road and continue to, um, ignore this, that absolutely everybody that's been around this town remembers what fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years was like in downtown Hudson. It was a Seth pool, to be honest with you. And we have come so far and we have one of the, the greatest assets in our river and our River Town community with downtown Hudson, the mix of restaurants and retail, the diversity that's there. We have too much at stake to let this type of standard be accepted and this type of behavior to continue.
Is there anything else you'd like to add to what you've already said?
Yes, I would like to add, um, on a personal note to some folks that I realize are not happy with me right now. It's not my intention or my motivation in this whole process to see people go unemployed or to take away their livelihoods. That is not why I'm here. I'm here for just the opposite reason, to protect and preserve the employees that we currently do have and the people that respect their business and run it professionally. And those people's jobs, including my own, could potentially be at stake if we continue to observe this subpar standard for, for what Ellie's is doing there.
Exhibit two is a statement that you presented to the city. Is that statement accurate?
Yes, it is.
I have no further questions.
Okay, would you like to cross-examine the witness?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Foster, I'll just be very brief here. The photographs that you talked about exhibits fifteen through twenty-nine, um, some were taken by you, some were taken by your staff, correct?
Correct.
And these were taking, were being taken the, the following day when you came to work?
Correct.
Uh, to your knowledge, did anybody witness, uh, what happened? To cause the things that you see in these photographs, the blood or the, the litter?
To my knowledge, um, a couple of witnesses that have already spoken, um, witnessed some of these things. Specifically, what's in the pictures, I can't tie them to what they saw. However, um, I did install video cameras, um, right around Easter time and the second, the second or third evening that those video cameras were, um, taking pictures. Um, we had an incident where I do have on video someone stumbling over from Ellie's so drunk they could hardly walk and throwing up all over my front walk.
Now, you also talked about a, a fight in the bar that happened within the last ninety days. Um, is that the only, uh, incident that you can report to us about something that's happening actually inside Ellie's as opposed to activities that are outside Ellie's?
No, there was another incident, um, uh, beer pong tournament day. Probably at this point, it was, um, um, a year and a half to two years ago. It was when they started to get busy. Again, it was on a Saturday afternoon. There was a, a, a very serious, uh, fight inside the bar again, uh, before five o'clock. And in fact, I believe, uh, Greg Elstrom came over to my bar and, um, wanted to borrow paper towels or something, talked to my general manager and to, and, and laughed and said it looks like a pig just got slaughtered in our bathroom.
So there's, there's two incidents that we're dealing with?
Correct.
Okay.
To my knowledge.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Questions from the council? I'd like to ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
Mr. Jacobson, in his opening statement, said that the subject of tonight's hearing might be promoting and catering to excess drinking and drunkenness. Do you think that's the case?
I do. I do, just based on what I know about, um, the type of specials they're running over there. Um, and the price point at which those specials are offered promotes, in my opinion, binge drinking to a younger crowd.
Are you a licensed server of alcohol or a licensee?
Yes.
So what would be the definition of excess drinking or drunkenness that you would use?
The definition would be, um, you know, point zero eight to me is not, doesn't constitute drunkenness. I think that, uh, some of the folks that are, um, consuming alcohol there are, you know, are very much higher on the, on the BAC than, than point zero eight. Um, I, I also recognize, um, you know, shots of alcohol, um, whatever, whatever this beer pong, uh, deal that they're doing. I would, I would say that there's one goal in mind and that's to get completely drunk. So I don't, you know, that's my definition of it. You know, slamming beers, slamming shots, one after the other, you know, to get to a point of extreme inebriation.
So the complaint tonight is that there's a disorderly house and it's up to us to hear testimony and facts and witness, hear from witnesses as to whether there's a disorderly house. And you're one of the, you made a sworn statement that you thought it was a disorderly house. Do you, and because we're here, because the, uh, establishment is serving alcohol, I'm trying to understand the relationship between the consumption of alcohol or overconsumption of alcohol and the creation of the disorderly house. In other words, would the noise still be a problem if there was no alcohol there? Would the vomiting still be happening if there was no alcohol?
In my opinion, no.
So do servers have training? Do, do your servers have training into when to recognize someone is intoxicated and shouldn't be served anymore?
Yes, and that's part of, um, you know, part of what you all require from the standpoint of, uh, a licensed operator is that they go through an online course or a, or a course at, uh, you know, a tech school. Um, and they, um, at those courses, guide you through those type of issues. My staff, um, absolutely, um, is all instructed throughout their training, um, when we hire them, to be very, very conscious of over-serving an individual. You know, and it's a judgment call for the most part. With the, the server or the bartender or the manager, it's a judgment call. I mean, we don't have breathalyzers that we can give to our patrons. We have to recognize that they are clearly, uh, have had too much to drink. Uh, and it's our responsibility to cut them off, uh, and call them a cab if need be. but stop serving them alcohol when they get to a certain point.
Mr. Waterman.
Oh, sure, if they want to ask questions, you mean in response.
Because I asked some questions here, do either of you have anything further on that line?
I, yeah, I think I have a couple of questions.
Why don't you go ahead, I'm going to give each of you a little bit of time.
Okay, the mayor was asking you about the responsibilities of an operator and how the creation of a disorderly house through, or responsibility of a licensee and the recreation of a disorderly house through excessive serving of, of alcohol and promoting drunkenness and binge drinking. Do you believe those problems lead to what other people have testified, what you've testified to about the vomiting, the profanity of the people leaving the place, the fights?
Absolutely.
Are all those evidence in your mind of a disorderly house?
Absolutely.
And would not controlling the patrons' use of alcohol or ingesting of alcohol, the sale to them of alcohol by the operators, such as you require, is that what you believe leads to and creates a disorderly house and those problems that are nuisance?
I do, and, and it's the operator's responsibility to keep that under control. It's not anybody else's. You've issued me the license. Ultimately, I'm responsible for everything that happens with that license.
That's all the questions I have.
Okay, Mr. Waterman, anything further? All right, thank you. Any other witnesses?
No.
Okay, witnesses by the respondent?
We'll call Chief Marty Jensen.
I do.
Chief Jensen, just by way of background, how long have you been a police officer in the city of Hudson?
Just over twenty-three years.
And during the course of your employment, have you had dealings with the owner or the operator at Ellie's on Main Bar?
Yes, sir, I have.
This is a drinking establishment, correct?
That is correct.
And have you done any research or check into the number of complaints or disturbances your department has received about Ellie's on Main?
Yes, sir, I have.
And what have you found out?
Well, I did a comparison of the number of calls to Ellie's to the other ten liquor establishments, or the other nine liquor establishments. There's ten in the downtown area. Over a period of January first of two thousand eight till January, or correction, June sixth or seventh of two thousand ten. When I did the comparisons, there was approximately sixty-nine calls to Ellie's on Main, which were calls for service either to Ellie's at four seventeen Second Street or near or very out in front of that address that was used as a landmark.
And when you say that the address was used as a landmark, explain what you meant.
Well, it could have come in as a dispatcher saying that there's a disturbance out in front of Ellie's, or there's a disturbance out in front of four seventeen Second Street. That doesn't particularly say it's in Ellie's or it was caused by Ellie's. It just gives, gives it a landmark. And since we need to have landmarks when we put in our statistics and our reports, that's the, how it comes up.
And I'm sorry, what was the number again?
Four seventeen, so with the number of calls? Calls for service total were sixty-nine calls during that time period.
And how does that compare to some of the other establishments in Hudson?
It's about the third highest of calls for service.
And what conclusions or opinions can you draw from that number?
Well, it is one of our busier establishments downtown. However, it's not the highest call, it's about the third highest. It's probably one of our, obviously busier because it's one of our busiest establishments after hours, after eleven, twelve o'clock at night.
And did the number of calls in this particular case cause some alarm from a law enforcement perspective?
Not, not the, the total number of calls for service. There were some disorderly conducts and fight calls that originally had come out that had concerns for us, but when you compare them with some of the other, the other establishments, it's kind of near the same.
So Ellie's is not the, the most frequent source of the calls?
That is correct.
True statement. And in terms of serious disturbances within the bar, how does Ellie's rank?
Well, I didn't look for disturbances within the bar, but when I took a look at the sixty-nine calls for service, there were twenty-eight calls that were either labeled disorderly conduct or disturbance calls, and seven of them that were labeled as fight calls. So you could look at approximately thirty-five calls that were disturbance-type calls that our officers got dispatched to or came upon.
And that could have been from a call by somebody in Ellie's, correct?
That is correct.
Or a neighbor outside of Ellie's?
That is correct, or the officer itself.
Now, during your involvement, or during your employment as a chief of police or through the, the city police department, have you experienced any kind of pushback or resistance from the owners or operators of Ellie's?
No, sir.
So when, describe some of the things that police would approach Ellie's about to manage the bar crowd and the bar scene.
Well, we would talk to them about the number of calls, the type of calls that we're receiving down there, what we're seeing. We would talk about, you know, trying to make sure that they had enough personnel inside so that they would be able to manage the crowd when it goes in, make sure that they have enough operators on to make sure that people aren't getting overly intoxicated. Trying to keep people that are coming into the bar that are already over-intoxicated, coming from a different establishment, trying to keep them out. Putting up surveillance cameras to help us should there be an assault or something that goes on within the bar where we have to press charges, that we'd be able to go in and use their surveillance equipment to gather evidence in regards to what happened with the disturbance.
And tell us about this surveillance camera, is this outside the establishment?
Well, there is one camera outside the establishment, there are several inside. The one that's outside, that's on the street, from what I understand, and I've never used it myself, is a wireless system that you can get onto the internet and that we would be able to get on and look at. I personally have not done that, I think some of my officers on the department have, but I have not. But I know that was offered to us by Ellie's.
So is this something where the police could actually sit and watch it in, in real time?
Correct, from what I understand.
Okay, and to your knowledge, does it also record?
I'm not sure about that.
Do any of the other establishments in Hudson have such cameras that allow law enforcement access?
That allows access real time?
Yes.
There's none that I'm aware of, but I know that there are a few in town that do have camera systems that do cooperate with us when we have assaults. Dick's Bar is one example where they've, on several occasions, where we've gone in and asked for video in regards to a fight or somebody's purse or items being stolen. They've been able to burn DVDs for us and we'd be able to use it in prosecution cases.
And have you experienced similar cooperation from the operators of Ellie's?
As far as I know, yes.
And that's a benefit to law enforcement, correct?
That is correct.
Would you agree that it is important for law enforcement to have a good working relationship with some of the taverns that have liquor licenses?
Oh, yes, sir, very important.
And, and why would you say that?
Well, a lot of it has to do with cooperation. Obviously, we're going to regulate, you know, some of the things that go on there, making sure that people aren't underage, that they're not having a large underage, not underage, but drinking going on in there where people are getting intoxicated and so forth. And also, when we have to deal with some of the patrons that get ruly or out of control, either inside or outside, and sometimes it's one-on-one or two-on-one with my officers, if it's getting out of hand, we want them to be able to come out and support us. So we want a good cooperation between us and the establishments.
Now, tell us about what, if any, law enforcement contacts the city of Hudson Police Department has had with Ellie's about, things such as binge drinking or over-indulgence, drunkenness, things like that.
I haven't personally talked to Ellie's about that. I know I've been in the establishment at one time in the early spring of two thousand eight, just to kind of take a look around, met with the owner, talked to him a little bit about some of my concerns. He's been very receptive to it. I know that some of my sergeants have talked to the owners and the bouncers down there and they've been very good about cooperating with our staff.
To your knowledge, has Ellie's been the subject of any type of enforcement action or violations that your, your department has set out for?
Not that I'm aware of.
And some of the things that would be concerning from a law enforcement perspective would be underage drinking, correct?
That is correct.
Serving of underage persons?
That is correct.
And in Ellie's particular case, no one under the age of twenty-one would even be allowed inside the establishment unless it was an employee, correct?
Or they were accompanied by a guardian or a parent.
And have you had to cite Ellie's for allowing underage persons inside?
Have not cited them, no.
Have there been any citations for excessive noise?
Not that I'm aware of.
To the, the establishment itself?
Not that I'm aware of.
Now, let's talk about some other activities that are going on within Ellie's or not going on within Ellie's. To your knowledge, has Ellie's been a center for any type of illegal activity like drug trafficking?
Not that I could see out of the reports. I don't have any personal knowledge of that.
Or that the place is some sort of a haven for prostitution or a place where gang members go or more serious crimes like that?
I haven't seen anything in our reports, no.
And have there been any after-hours violations with Ellie's that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Now, we, we heard some testimony tonight about activities of the patrons after they leave the establishment. Are you familiar with the, are closing laws require patrons to leave?
Correct.
And if a patron were to leave, could that person come back in to use something as innocent as the restrooms or a sink?
After closing hours?
Correct.
No, you're not allowed on the establishment.
And once that patron leaves the establishment, does the owner of the bar that they left from have any control or management over that person out in the streets?
No, sir.
And if there was any type of unruly behavior out in the public streets, who would be responsible for enforcing that type of activity?
That would be the police department.
And does the police department take strides to enforce public decency laws?
As best we can.
And what types of things does the police department do?
Well, obviously, during bar closing time, that's when we usually have a majority of our law enforcement officers that are on duty, be downtown patrolling. We'll be looking for intoxicated people, trying to go to their cars and stopping them before they, they get there. Drunk driving, urination, public urination, disorderly conducts and so forth. The problem that we run into is that sometimes on a Friday and Saturday night, I might only have four officers out and if they're busy on other calls such as domestics or emergency detentions and so forth, I might be down to one car in the downtown area. So with a lot of establishments open and a lot of people walking around, it's hard to get everything.
But the police department, the police department does make efforts to patrol the downtown area and to stop the things that we've heard people complaining about today.
Yes, especially around bar closing.
Now, some of the, the complaints such as the vomiting and the, the urination, these would be things that police would respond to if they were to see it?
Correct.
Or if they received a complaint about it, correct?
Correct.
This isn't the type of community that police would look the other way about, correct?
That's correct.
Take it very seriously.
Correct.
And aren't things like the vomiting or the public urination unique to Ellie's on Main?
No.
In your estimation?
No, I, when I was on patrol, we used to see it all over town.
And how long was it that you were on patrol for?
I was on patrol till two thousand and eight, when I got promoted to chief of police.
That was partially the time when Ellie's was open, correct?
Correct.
And it, it comes from other establishments, correct?
That is correct.
And is it safe to say that not all of the incidents that we've heard from tonight are coming from bars or, or our bar patrons?
Are you talking about around the area where Ellie's is at?
In the downtown area, correct.
Oh, in the downtown area, that's correct.
Some of these people could be coming from other residences, parties in houses and things like that?
It's possible, yes.
All right, and just for the record, you're testifying tonight, not on behalf of one side or the other, but you've been subpoenaed to appear here tonight, correct?
That is correct.
That's all I have, thank you.
You said that there were sixty-nine calls for service to the, to the address that Ellie's is located at?
Four seventeen Second Street, that's correct.
Sixty-nine, since when?
Since January first of two thousand and eight. That's when I began. Because they came into existence sometime in August, I wanted to be able to get an accurate number, so I began with January first of two thousand and eight and went forward from there.
And of those sixty-nine calls, twenty-eight were disturbance or disorderly conduct calls?
That is correct.
Seven were fights or assault complaints?
That is correct.
And there were also some EMS calls, did you check on those?
No, sir, I did not.
I understand there was an assault, a call for an assault to EMS in March of two thousand nine and another one in April of two thousand nine and a third in May of two thousand nine. Are you familiar with those?
I'd have to take a look at the records to see if they came in as assaults or disorderly conduct complaints, but I would imagine that a lot of times we do have fights and people are bloody EMS's dispatched to the scene.
You've indicated that you don't always have adequate police force available, police officers available to control these things that are taking place outside of Ellie's.
Outside of Ellie's?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Sometimes you only have one officer on duty on a, a late night or that's not occupied on the late night for the whole downtown area, right?
That is correct.
And you said that you made, you tried to accumulate, compare volumes of complaints with, for different establishments. Did you make any attempt to compare them on the basis of the number of customers they have or the volume of business they do?
No, sir, I just did it on our records of calls for service.
And so if, if, if a place had many more patrons than Ellie's and did a much larger business Ellie, than Ellie's, one, one would expect that they're just on a, the basis of the number of people involved, that there might be more complaints, right?
That's a possibility.
So we don't know how Ellie's stacks up in terms of the number of customers and the volume of customers that are coming in there, do we?
I don't know anything about that.
But we do know that there are many other businesses, there are other businesses in the, in, in the town, other bars in the town, that may, that may have more customers who do larger volumes of business than Ellie's.
That's correct.
Now, does Ellie's have surveillance cameras outside on the sidewalk?
They have it, I believe it's outside on their front entrance. It wouldn't be on the sidewalk, it would be up high so you could look down at the door. I have personally have not seen.
But not on the sidewalk, not what's going on on the sidewalk.
Again, I've not seen the camera, so I'm not sure exactly what it says.
The, one of the complaints is they keep their front door open and there's loud music coming out the front door and the sidewalk in, in effect, becomes almost like part of the bar. And you see littering on the sidewalk and you see drink cups with beer on the sidewalks. And we have, we have photos of that. Is that proper behavior?
Is that proper behavior? No, sir.
There, there isn't supposed to be drinking out on the sidewalks, is there?
No, sir, there's not.
And people aren't supposed to be taking drinks outside of the establishment in plastic cups and throwing their plastic cups around and onto people's doorsteps after they have consumed their alcoholic beverages?
No, they're not.
That's not proper behavior, that's disorderly behavior.
That is correct.
That's a nuisance in your mind.
It's a littering complaint, but it can be a nuisance for my officers who have to deal with it.
Or for the people that have to deal with it, the citizens of Hudson, of Hudson for whom you work, right?
Correct.
And if there are people that are coming out of the bar and, and frightening women such that the neighbors have to call police, such as Jacqueline Geiger recounted, that's a, a nuisance, isn't it?
This situation would be a nuisance, yes, sir.
And that's a, a problem that you think involves disorderly conduct?
Correct.
And now have you ever spoken to Ellie's about the fact that they keep their door, front door, open and there's loud noise coming out disturbing the neighbors?
I personally have not, no, sir.
Have you ever spoken to them about the fact that they don't have an operator on the back steps or on the deck and, and that drunken patrons are going down the steps and littering?
No, sir, I have not.
Have you ever spoken to them about the fact that there's excessive noise coming off the deck and disturbing the neighbors?
No, sir, I have not.
That's all the questions I have.
Can I follow up on a couple of points?
Yes.
Thank you. Chief, Mr. Jacobson asked you some questions about some of the disorderly activities occurring outside. Thank you. Chief, Mr. Jacobson asked you some questions about some of the disorderly activities occurring outside of Ellie's. To your knowledge, is there any disorderly activities that are regularly occurring inside Ellie's?
Not that I'm aware of, other than the calls that we get.
And are you aware of anything that the owners or the operators of Ellie's that are doing to promote disorderly behavior?
Not that I'm aware of.
And would you consider Ellie's itself to be a disorderly house, or operating a disorderly house?
You're asking my opinion?
I'm asking your opinion.
I don't think it's any more disorderly than any other businesses that we have in town, according to the stats that I've taken a look at.
Thank you, that's all I have.
By the way, were you, I just want to follow up, were you ever called by Ellie's about this incident that occurred in the last couple of months when there was somebody beaten up in the bathroom that was so bad that one of the bart... Or one of the owners came out and said it looked like a stuck pig in there?
No, sir, I did not.
You never heard about that?
I've heard rumors about it, but I never heard that comment, me personally, myself.
Did officers ever respond to that?
I believe they did respond to it, but I can't remember what incident number that would have been.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Okay. And did you have anything else? Council members have anything else? Yes.
I have one question. Of the 69 calls, you said that 35 of them were disturbance-related?
Disturbance or fight calls, correct.
Okay, so that's about 50%. Do we have any idea how that relates to the percentage of disturbance calls at other businesses? Is 50%... Is that the average? Is that high? Is it low?
It's high, but it's not the highest of the establishments downtown.
And I'm not talking about the total number of calls, I'm talking about the type of call. So is even the ones that have a larger number of responses from the department?
I think it's equal to one other, I think it's right around that 35% mark, or 40% mark.
Okay, because this is 50%.
Right, right around 35, 40%.
Okay.
Without a calculator, I can't figure it out in my head, right off the bat.
That's all. I have one other question, I'm sorry. The surveillance cameras that supposedly are hooked up to dispatch, are they there simply for responding in a situation that you need a witness? Or are they truly monitored, and how realistic is it that they're being closely watched?
From what I understand, the surveillance cameras are in a wireless system that you can access through the internet. So Dispatch has been given the address and the code to get in there, so they can go in there and bring up those cameras when they want to, it's not tied directly to Dispatch itself. So anybody that would have the access to that system would be able to go in there and take a look.
Okay.
Chief, in regard to the deck permit, the expansion, and the amendment of the premise permit for their liquor license last year, do you recall whether the premise description included a gate at the back stairs?
If I remember correctly, it did talk about having a gate at the top of the stairs.
Whether there was a gate required or not, would it be the responsibility of the licensee to control who comes and goes there, and whether they take alcohol off premises? Or whether underage people, for example, came into the premises?
It would be their responsibility to control that access, mainly to make sure that underage people are not coming onto the premises itself. I know we ask the liquor license establishments downtown to try to control their patrons must possible taking alcohol off, but we also tell them not to get into a fight if somebody says, "I'm taking this glass and you're going to have to knock me down to get it." Because that's not their responsibility to fight somebody over a bottle leaving the establishment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, any other witnesses?
Yes, Sergeant Glenn Hartman.
I do.
Sergeant Hartman, you're a member of the Hudson Police Department?
I am.
And how long have you been so employed?
Seventeen years.
You're familiar with Ellie's on Main?
I am.
And in what way are you familiar with that establishment?
Just during the normal course of my patrol duties as a patrol sergeant. I've had occasion to drive by and observe activity going on down there.
Do you ever have any reason or purpose to enter Ellie's for something other than relating or responding to a disturbance call?
The only time I've ever entered Ellie's was for a medical, and it was a situation where a patron was dancing out on the dance floor and knocked some kind of a decoration down. And as the object hit the person, I believe, in the head, and so I responded down there to help with medics.
And do you have personal dealings with the owners or operators of Ellie's?
Mr. Elstrom has communicated with me on multiple occasions, I guess, since he's opened up, just kind of asking my advice on how to kind of deal with certain situations down there. Since he shared with me that he was a new business owner, and that he once worked at Ford and was laid off, and was trying to start a new business and try to start over.
So Mr. Elstrom approached you about recommendations or advice that you might be able to offer?
Correct.
And what types of things did you talk about at the beginning of your relationship?
Well, I think at the very beginning, he was just talking about the bar business in general, and some of the, I guess, pitfalls and things of that, and just normal conversation. It wasn't anything necessarily specific at the beginning. I was just more there, you know, he just called and asked because we knew each other, and he felt comfortable calling me and asking me.
And as that progressed, and as Ellie's continued to do business, did he come back to you seeking advice or recommendations?
He did.
And was there anything in particular that he approached you about?
Yeah, the surveillance cameras that he put into the bar, it was kind of, at first wasn't a, you know, as the chief had mentioned, we've had other establishments that have surveillance in there. What was particularly unique with Mr. Elstrom's establishment was the putting in that outside camera and then giving us access to that camera. That was, I'd never seen anything like that before, so it was very interesting to me.
Do you know what that outside camera can see?
Yeah, I've actually had it on my computer in my office when I was working nights as a patrol sergeant, and so I was actually able to sit in my office and observe things going on down there.
Are there any other establishments or businesses that allow law enforcement access to a surveillance camera like that?
Not in real time and not from a computer. I mean, if you consider the fact that we're able to access that from our computers and our squad cars, that's pretty impressive. And the fact that our dispatchers have it is also very, you know, it's just very nice.
And from a law enforcement perspective, why is it nice? Are you able to monitor activities for enforcement purposes, or does it provide some other benefit?
I think it just, all of those things, you know, the fact that our dispatchers can maybe train that camera on something that's going down there before it even happens to unfold, and can dispatch us there a little more quickly. As the chief mentioned, you know, as well, that the fact that we're able to record, I don't know if that camera actually records, I guess you're going to have to ask Mr. Elstrom. But the fact that we're able to have access to it is, and that he offered that to us was unprecedented, and none of the other establishments have stepped up and done that.
So if need be, and there were complaints about people drinking outside the establishment, or littering, or other inappropriate activity, law enforcement could monitor that and take enforcement action if it's all fit, true?
Absolutely.
Are you familiar with the monitoring cameras inside the establishment?
Familiar with? I've never had the opportunity to go in and review the system or look at it, but I know that Mr. Elstrom has shared with me that he's planning on adding additional cameras, you know, in an effort to try to maximize the surveillance inside. And trying to do what he can to try to assist us in maintaining control, I guess.
Now, are you involved in any way with the training or licensing of bartenders?
No.
Would you know if there were persons that are not authorized or not licensed to be operating as bartender, working?
No.
Now, you're still a patrol officer, correct?
Right, I'm a patrol sergeant, yeah.
Patrol sergeant. And would you have any knowledge or experience in illegal activities going on at or with inside the building of Ellie's on Main?
If I was made aware of it by somebody.
From a law enforcement perspective, is this an establishment that is a known drug trafficking location?
No.
Or would the police department have concerns about solicitation of prostitution, or distribution of obscene materials, anything like that?
No.
Is this a place where there's gang activity or organized crime activity?
No.
And have you had to respond for things that was inappropriate, such as underage drinking, or underage persons being in the establishment?
No.
Have you ever had to respond to complaint about the business operating after hours?
No.
Now, we heard the chief talk about the number of calls that he has calculated based on reports, and of the 69 calls, 28 were disorderly conduct or disturbance calls? Is that true?
Yes.
And of those, we heard testimony that seven were fights?
Yes.
Do you know anything about those?
Without specifically going through and auditing the individual complaints, I would not know.
And is that out of the ordinary as far as other establishments in Hudson?
Is that out of the ordinary as far as number?
The number, correct.
It is out of the ordinary from the standpoint that it's not a high number. We've had a lot more problems at other establishments in the city than that. Significantly more problems.
Now, have you provided any recommendations concerning the types or number of bouncers or bar security?
Have I recommended that? No, but Mr. Elstrom has pointed out to me that he's put a, I guess what I would consider to be an extraordinary amount of extra bouncers on, according to him, compared to what the other establishments do. You know, our patrol officers at night, along with the patrol sergeants, I guess I should point out, do walk-throughs on the bars downtown. Some of the patrol sergeants at night would probably have a little bit better perspective as far as the number of employees he has inside. But that's just what Mr. Elstrom has told me that he's done, he's beefed up his internal security.
And what are some of the types of things that the patrol officers are looking for when they're patrolling the downtown area around bar closing or during the bar hours?
Well, as the chief pointed out, we're concentrating, and by the way, I'll mention that the city council, by their direction, and with their support, we hired, you know, our casual call officers and beefed up our casual call. This was in order to allow the officers, the patrol sergeants in particular, to start focusing our patrol efforts in the downtown area, specifically at bar closing time. Now, our full-time officers, our regular full-time officers, do focus their efforts at bar close time downtown. And the implementation of our casual call officers, who can then patrol the other parts of the city that, the residential areas or the industrial park, then allows our full-time regular officers to come downtown and focus their efforts down there. They have been doing that. The other patrol sergeants have been doing that, and we've made a conscious effort to be a presence downtown, and I think we've accomplished that. It's not perfect, you know, obviously we'd love to be able to be in some of these establishments 100% of the time, but that is just not reality.
And in your experience, have things such as intoxicated persons, or incidences of vomiting, vomiting, or public urination occurred before Ellie's opened for business?
Yes.
And has that been consistent throughout the time that you've worked as a police officer for the city?
Yes.
And are you aware of anything that would suggest that all of these incidents that we've heard about tonight are caused by Ellie's itself, or is it part of just the bar scene in?
It is a part of that, it is a part of that scene. That is just the nature of that business, and that's what we're, you know, paid to respond to.
But have you, as a patrol sergeant, seen anything that was inappropriate about the way that Ellie's has operated over the past three years?
No, I would say it's completely the opposite. I think Mr. Elstrom is, I've never, in the 17 years I've worked, I've never had a bar owner come down there and talk with us on a regular basis and try to improve things within his establishment. Never.
That's a compliment to Mr. Elstrom.
It is, it's a, it is a compliment to him.
And just for the record, you've been subpoenaed to appear here tonight?
I have.
That's all I have, thank you.
I'm just wondering about improvements to the establishment. There's testimony that since June 4, there have been speakers out on the deck that, where there wasn't supposed to be music on the deck. Is that an improvement to the establishment?
That's, I've not heard that, but I don't, I'm not working, I'm not a night patrol sergeant, so I haven't specifically seen anything come across my desk as far as complaints specific to the speakers being out there. I have not heard that from...
You're not a night patrol sergeant?
Not any longer, we have two other night patrol sergeants.
What are your hours?
My hours now are, I start at 8:00 in the morning and work until 6:00 at night.
And how long has that been going on?
For about two years now. I was a night patrol sergeant prior to that.
So for the last two years, you haven't been policing downtown during the night hours?
That's correct.
And so you haven't been down checking out Ellie's and the area around Ellie's at night, have you?
Me personally?
Yeah.
No.
You haven't been going into Ellie's at night, have you?
No.
When is the last time you were in Ellie's?
It would have been that medical that I mentioned to you that I was at before.
When's that?
When was it?
Yeah.
You know, I'd have to go back and look in our, you know, complaint system to find out when exactly that was.
More than two years ago?
Yeah, I would say it was probably more than two years.
So you haven't been into Ellie's in the last two years to see what they're doing, right?
Well, you understand that I have two other patrol sergeants that we communicate with and we work with.
But they're not here, you're here. You're here. I'm asking you what you've observed. They're not here.
He is here. We have another night patrol sergeant.
He's not testifying, though, you're testifying.
Right.
And how many times have you looked at the surveillance camera? Looked what's being recorded on the surveillance camera at Ellie's?
When was the last time?
Yeah.
Probably two years ago.
Now, what was in Ellie's before Ellie's came there?
I do not recall. It's been several, as Mr. Foster mentioned, it was quite a few different food establishments.
Yeah, and these problems of drunks coming out of Ellie's and shouting profanities and disturbing the neighbors, those types of people weren't coming out of Ellie's when it was a food establishment, right?
No, not that I'm...
I used the term Ellie's, I meant that location. Those people weren't coming out of Ellie's, or out of that location before it became Ellie's, right? The drunks.
Well, there was bars in there when there was restaurants there, if that's what you mean.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, every time there's been a restaurant there, in my recollection, there's been a bar there as well.
Have you made any attempt to record or to determine what the, whether there's been an increase in complaints involving that address since it became Ellie's?
I understand your question. Have we on the police department focused on making comparisons or taking a number of...
Determining, yeah, correct.
When they were food establishments?
Right.
No. Could, but we never did.
Is there a surveillance camera that records what's going on on the sidewalk at Ellie's?
Yes.
And what is it, where is its focus? The chief said it was just focused on the doorway.
Oh, no, actually, you can actually move it from the computer, so you can move it around, and you can have all kinds of different angles on it. You can shoot it across the street.
Have you ever done that?
Yeah.
During your daytime hours when you're working?
No.
You've done it at night?
Done it at night.
Yeah, how often?
I don't recall when I was working nights. It was probably a dozen times, I suppose.
Is this again more than two years ago?
Yes.
Have you ever checked to see whether there were operators on the deck?
No.
Or patrolling the back stairway?
No.
That's all the questions I have.
Just to follow up on a couple of points if I could. Sergeant Hartman, you were starting to talk about your communications with other staff members of the... members of the police department. We missed Mr. Jacobson cut you off. What is it that police officers and police sergeants in particular do when they're changing shifts?
Well, we have roll call. We basically, what, I shouldn't say, we don't call it roll call, because that's what people commonly refer to it as, but there is an exchange of information that occurs between officers, between the day officers and the night officers. We may have information that we have during the daytime that needs to be passed along to the night officers. And in turn, when the night officers get off duty, they pass that information along to the day officers. Now, as it relates specifically to the patrol sergeants, that's a little bit more focused. We attempt to focus our patrol efforts at nighttime in particular, and we also do it during the day, but not to the same degree. The point is, is that at nighttime in particular is what was directed by the chief of police and our management was to focus our, you know, efforts downtown. That takes place with the patrol sergeants. So we do talk about what goes on in the downtown area, even though I'm not necessarily working at nighttime. I do think I have a pretty good perspective about what's going on, especially since I've worked nights for twelve years.
So, I mean, the officers are talking amongst themselves about official business, correct?
Correct.
And then is it also safe to say that the officers oftentimes talk informally about what's been going on, just talking about work?
Absolutely.
And during either of those types of conversations, have you ever come across information that would suggest to you that there was a problem at Ellie's regarding it maintaining a disorderly house?
No.
You also live in Hudson, correct?
I live in the Hudson area.
Okay. Do you have any reason to drive by or to frequent the downtown area at night? Or, I guess the point I'm getting at is, have you seen anything when you're not off, when you're off duty as far as unsavory behavior coming out of Ellie's or activity inside the bar itself?
No.
So even though you didn't see it when you were the night sergeant, you don't see it when you're the day sergeant, and you don't see it as a private citizen, is what you're saying?
I will say, just for the sake of discussion, that I'm also a volunteer EMT, and I have gone to, you know, I would say, two medicals in the, one in front of Ellie's and another one in the area of Ellie's. So in my volunteer efforts, you know, as far as on the ambulance, we've been down there for some medicals. Now, I don't specifically recall the dates or anything like that, but I've been down there for those.
And during those times, did you see anything out of the ordinary as far as Ellie's operating a disorderly house?
No.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, any member of the council have a question?
I do. Officer Hartman, you have used some qualified statements which are inexact, and I'm trying to pin something down. You mentioned that, or we have testimony from Chief Jensen, that Ellie's ranks about third of the ten licensed establishments downtown that have that type of license. So there are two establishments that would rank higher, that Ellie's is third. You mentioned that there are establishments that have significantly higher call rates than Ellie's. Do you have numbers on those call rates for us?
Well, the chief does.
Well, I'm asking you.
No, I don't have specific number on front of me.
Okay, but so, but when you said significantly, what were you, I mean, you don't have any numbers on that?
No, I'm just telling you from my experience in working nights, that from the number of calls that I made, there were a significant number that were made to a certain establishment within the city.
Okay, but you haven't worked nights in more than two years?
Two years, right.
And the period we're talking about is the last two years.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to ask you a couple of questions also, Sergeant Hartman. So you were asked if there was surveillance equipment that records the front sidewalk, and you answered yes, and did you mean that there's a record created?
If I said yes, I misspoke. I don't know specifically, talking about that camera that Mr. Elstrom has out in the front of his business, I don't know if that records.
Okay. And again, in regard to that front sidewalk surveillance equipment, you talked about that you thought it was a benefit, that it was available, and that it could conceivably allow the monitoring of a situation as it developed, I think, or some words to that effect. Do you have any example, or are you aware of any example where that happened?
No.
And that equipment could conceivably be used in the police response to an incident in monitoring what was going on or something, I believe. Are you aware of any situation where that's happened?
No.
How about afterwards in creating a record that might be used in prosecution or something? I think it was mentioned that at another establishment, there's a, one of our other witnesses stated that there was a DVD that had been made available to the police to help in prosecution. Are you aware of any such recordings from Ellie's that had ever been provided or ever been used in a prosecution?
No.
So do you see any difference between if that equipment didn't exist or if it did in the police response or prosecution? I mean, are you aware of it ever being utilized at all by our police department in a response, prevention, or prosecution?
Ellie's in particular?
Yeah.
I am, I am not, which, I am not aware of any specific DVDs that were, that were made at Ellie's and were used in evidence.
And you testified as to a conversation that you had with Mr. Elstrom about how many bouncers there were, and have you witnessed how many bouncers there are there?
No, he just told me that he was increasing them to six. That was the, that was the number that he put out.
Okay. So, I mean, would I be right to say that that's, I'm not sure what the term is, but it's hearsay essentially? Would that be hearsay?
Yeah, I just was sharing with you what, you know, Mr. Elstrom had told me, right?
Okay. Anyone else have anything?
I had.
Wait a minute, I'll go first here.
Do we know that the six means that there are six on duty every night, or just that there are six employed?
Well, the mayor just pointed out that it was hearsay. I don't know if you really want me to continue to say it again.
Okay.
Lee? I think my question's relative. In the time at which he told you he was increasing to six, did he also tell you why?
Yes.
And that would be?
And it was in an effort with what's been happening and current events that he wanted to show that he's going above and beyond in trying to control potential situations that could happen down there. That was his intent.
One other question. Are you aware of any other bars that have a need for six bouncers?
To be honest with you, I can't comment on how they even arrive and how many bouncers they should or should not have. That's kind of outside the, I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's a proper number or not, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question?
I need clarification on something the officer just said in response to Lee. You mentioned that he had hired up to, or was hiring six bouncers in anticipation of what might happen? Or is it in response to what's actually happening?
No, I think, I think that what the, and once again, I guess I'm paraphrasing what, you know, what Mr. Elstrom told me.
Please don't answer that, because I don't expect you to know his state of mind. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're finished. Thank you. Any other witnesses?
Greg Elstrom.
I do.
Mr. Elstrom, you're the operator of Ellie's on Main?
Yes, I am.
And Ellie's on Main opened August of two thousand and seven, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you have some experience before operating Ellie's?
I did, yes.
What type of experience did you have?
I bartended for five years roughly in the downtown Hudson area.
Describe for us Ellie's, the establishment, and the clientele that you serve.
Well, you know, Ellie's, like you said, you know, started in oh seven, and, you know, I totally worked, for the first year, I worked the bar until it started getting popular, like they said, in two thousand and eight. And it's a young crowd, it's no different than some of the other nightly bars downtown. I don't know exactly what else you, you know, as far as.
When you say young crowd, we're talking like twenty-something?
Well, I have, you know, I have twenty-one to twenty-five year olds. Some nights I have, you know, people my age, thirty-five to forty, and, but I don't, the thing about my bar is, once it started getting busy, it doesn't get busy until eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock. If someone was to come into my bar on a Friday night at eight o'clock, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, there might be twelve, fifteen people in my bar, because I don't serve food.
And do you have any estimates on the number of persons that will frequent your bar on a given night or a given weekend?
I would say at one time in my bar, maybe a hundred and thirty people.
That's physically sitting inside the bar?
Correct, correct. But then they come and go.
Okay. So over the course of an evening, would you have any idea of how many different people would have frequented the bar?
Oh, two hundred.
Now, when the bar is operating during some of these busy times, are you present?
I am.
And what is your function in the bar during those?
I am, as Mr. Hartman stated, far as six bouncers, I am the six bouncers. I have five bouncers, and the reason why I beefed it up is because of the deck. As stated, sometimes I don't have a bouncer out there because I'm, like Sundays and Mondays, I am not busy. It would be a hardship for me to have someone out there at three o'clock and not have one person on my deck until maybe ten o'clock.
Let's, let's break this down a little bit. When did you go to hiring five other bouncers?
Oh, I've had five bouncers out for probably a year and a half.
Okay. And what was the reason for, well, how many bouncers did you have before that?
Like I said, it was, I was the sole bartender, then things start getting busy, and then I hired a bartender. I became the doorman slash bouncer. Things got busier, so I would say, you know, right away I had maybe two other guys and myself.
And then you went to five other?
I went to four. And then as things got busier, I went to five. And as soon as I got the deck, I became the sixth.
And what were you, what was your purpose by hiring five other bouncers?
Well, because now I have a rear entrance, so that means I have to have someone watching either the, if it's not busy, they actually sit inside of the door that leads to the deck, and they card people as they come in to get served. Or on the busier nights when the deck is actually being used, they'll sit out by the stairway. And then I have another bouncer that sits out, you know, the front door.
And what is the, what is the bouncer sitting at the front door do?
He's carding. That's his sole job, is just to card people when they come in.
Check their identification?
Correct.
Make sure they're of legal drinking age?
Correct.
So you've got one in the back?
Correct.
And then you've got one in the front?
Correct.
Where are the others?
I have one on my dance floor.
Okay, and what is that bouncer's responsibility?
Just to maintain that they're not body slamming each other, you know, getting too rough with the, with the dancing.
Okay. And then where's the fourth one?
Well, then the next one is a slash bar back, as he's getting ice and stocking the coolers, then his main job is to watch the front of, you know, the main bar in front. And then the, actually, then my job is to drift back and forth throughout the bar. I go on top, you know, all the deck, and back into the bar, into the bathrooms, stuff like that.
Kind of like a floater?
Correct.
How many, roughly how many square feet of usable space do you have open to customers?
Probably twenty-five hundred.
And was there any rhyme or reason to you arriving at five other bouncers?
No, I just felt that I needed one in the dance floor, obviously, two at the exits when they come in, one to bar back, one to, you know, stock the stuff, because the bartenders can't do that, and then one to watch the whole inside the bar.
And you've talked a little bit about some of the responsibilities, as far as watching the bar, watching some of the people on the dance floor, checking IDs. Do your bouncers do anything else, or do they have any other responsibilities?
Yeah, they, you know, their jobs while they're bouncing is to clean up the bar. When people leave a table and their cups and all that stuff and their bottles are there, they're, they clear it off, wipe it down, throw it away. At the end of the night, their job is to clean up, sweep up, mop up everything, and I mean, that's their job. It's to make it look nice.
And that includes the interior of the establishment?
Correct.
Do your staff do anything about cleaning the exterior of the establishment?
Yes, they go out, they go out, well, the thing is, some nights, especially on the weekends, most of these kids are, they're standing out there waiting for taxis, so we have to virtually wait some, like it was brought up sometimes, until three o'clock in the morning, even when we're all done cleaning. And then we'll go out and clean up after them when they've, the last few have left.
And what types of things are you cleaning up?
I clean up, like was in those pictures, cups. There's been some vomit that we've cleaned up, just the standard stuff, that cigarette butt sweeps those off.
Now, we saw some photographs tonight, and have you seen them too?
Correct, right.
You know, with some litter and some what appears to be vomit, one incident of some blood. If your staff is cleaning up these things, how do you explain those photographs?
You know, like I said, they all, they all have their jobs, and, you know, sometimes I guess they forgot to do it or they screwed up, you know, they didn't, they didn't do their job right.
Is that something that?
Basically what it comes down to.
Is that something that you condone, is leaving trash out there, if you're aware of it?
Not at all.
Do your bartender, or strike that, do your bouncers have a security function inside the bar to protect the safety of the customers and the rest of your staff?
I'm not sure what you're getting at with that.
I mean, are your bartender, or your, are your bouncers supposed to be on the lookout for things happening?
Yes, correct, yes.
Explain that, please.
Their job is to, to get back to the over-serving, you know, when a bartender thinks there's someone who's too drunk to be in there, they will motion for the, the bouncer to come over and have them leave the establishment.
Why would you have an intoxicated person leave the establishment?
For that purpose. I don't want to serve them anymore alcohol. And I don't want them, I don't want them to cause any issues in the bar as well.
They would be a concern for the, the safety of others?
Correct.
Do your bartenders monitor, at least the ones on the doors, do they monitor people leaving with liquor or?
The bartenders, probably not. It's more so the bouncer's job, because the one guy is actually sitting there twenty-four seven, you know, the whole time.
And what are they supposed to do at the doors?
Monitor for people leaving with drinks and card, people trying to come in.
And if someone was trying to leave with a, an alcoholic beverage, what do they do? Tell them not to and let them go?
No, actually, we, we, I did not know that, but we actually physically take them away.
What do you mean, you didn't know that?
Well, just listening to what they're talking about, I didn't know that if we don't, you know, sometimes if they get out, or like Mr. Jensen said, it's not our job to take a drink away and cause a fight or something like that. We, I've always thought if you see them with a drink, take it away, you can't leave without it or go out this building without it.
And have your bouncers in fact done that before?
Yes.
Have you done that before?
Yes.
Do you have any experience with, you know, some customers, young customers in particular, trying to sneak alcohol out?
All the time.
Can you give us an example of what you have to?
Especially winter months when they got coats on. You know, that's why, most of the time when I'm down there, I don't have a red staff shirt on, so I look like a regular customer, and I float around, and, you know, if I see something, then I get a bouncer to take care of the situation. But I have, example this weekend, someone tried putting one down his pants and walking out, and I told the bouncer he had one in his pants, so he told me quickly with that and took it away from him.
Now, are any of your bouncers allowed to consume alcohol while they're working?
Oh.
Without exception?
Without exception.
And how about yourself? Are you consuming alcohol while you're working?
I don't drink in my bar.
And how about your bartenders?
They don't drink at all.
Let's talk about your bartenders briefly. Do they have to go through any type of training or licensing?
Yes.
Describe what they have to do.
As what Pete Foster said with his, they have to take an online class. They have to, Marty Jensen has to do a background check on them to see if they have any problems with alcohol in the past of whatever, I don't know, but.
And are your bartenders licensed?
Yes.
Now, we've heard some testimony today about you needing to have either bouncers or licensed bartenders out on the back deck.
Correct.
What's your understanding about that requirement?
My understanding on that was when we had the meeting, is that as long as I had a camera that was monitoring them, and I even took it upon myself to say that I'd have bouncers out there, but I was under the assumption that as long as the bartender, Um, but I was under the assumption that as long as the bartender, if I had a few people out there and the bartender walked out there, because my bartenders do walk out there to serve the people on the deck, and they come back in, um, those are during the slow nights. Actually, on my busy nights, on Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays and Saturdays, I do have a, a licensed bartender slash bouncer, because I've had, had my bouncers get, uh, licensed, and, uh, um, so I have licensed people out there during my busy hours, you know, when, when the deck is actually being used. You know, when it's not being used, we use the camera and the bartender goes back and forth.
Let's talk about this camera. You have a, uh, a security camera on the back deck?
Correct.
And it monitors all of the tables and all of the area of the deck?
Correct.
And, um, is that a recording camera or?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And can somebody watch what's going on, or what that camera is recording, uh, real time?
Yes.
And, uh, where can that be viewed?
That can be viewed, uh, from anybody. I view it at home. I view all my cameras from home when I'm not down there. Um, if I would give people codes, anybody could view it.
But in terms of, you, you said that you have a bartender that's monitoring that camera?
Oh, I have a forty-inch plasma TV that I ran that, uh, a separate line to that, so it's right in front of the bart, when they're serving drinks, they can look right at this forty-inch TV screen and see the whole deck.
So some of your television sets have, say, sports or other shows, and you've got one dedicated to the deck?
Correct.
Um, is anything obstruct or obscure that, um, television from the, the vision of the bartender?
No.
Um, you also had talked about these security cameras being accessible from you or by you at home?
Correct.
Do you ever access it at home?
Twenty-four seven. It's, uh, it's on right now.
I mean, do you ever personally watch it from home, is what I'm saying?
Oh, I do, yes.
It's, it's always active?
It's always active. I can walk in right now and it, I can start watching it.
Um, and what are the purposes of these security cameras inside the bar, with the exception of the one you talked about that monitors the, the deck?
Why do I watch them?
What's the purpose of them? Why do you have them?
Uh, to cover my butt, you know, if there's any situations, I can go back and, and record it, burn a DVD to, to, to show whatever happened, any kind of incident.
You also heard, uh, some testimony tonight about the exterior camera?
Yes.
And you've given law enforcement, uh, access to that camera?
Yes.
Um, has that ever been used in a police investigation, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, I think twice is what I was told.
Uh, and you, did you provide information, or did you provide a, a DVD of some happenings?
Uh, no, I think all they did was they, there was an incident, uh, no, this is just hearsay, is that there was an incident like a car accident or something out in front late at night and dispatches zoomed in on it and they were watching it live, what was happening. They never came and asked me to burn them a copy of that incident, but.
Now, do your, um, bartenders have any training in detecting, uh, persons that have drank too much alcohol?
Yes.
And, um, does your establishment have a policy of what to do with those types of customers?
Absolutely. If they see anybody that, uh, looks totally drunk, uh, like I said, they wave to a bouncer and we escort them out.
We've also heard some accusations that your price point on alcoholic beverage or your specials are at such a point that it encourages intoxication or encourages binge drinking. Um, do you have a response to those accusations?
I do. Uh, my, my specials is from nine until midnight. Uh, they're two-for-ones, um, just to try to get an earlier crowd. But like I said, I probably don't get more than thirty people in my bar until after eleven-thirty, midnight, so, uh, it's weird. We, we talk about this all the time at the bar hall. It gets busy so late, and by that time, uh, the special is already over. So it's, it's early specials.
Um, in, in your experience, are, are two-for-ones anything that are out of the ordinary?
Just tap beer and just, uh, rail alcohol.
Right, that's something that other establishments do too?
Bars I know. I actually stole it for some, some, another bar.
And we've also heard some testimony about, uh, beer pong?
Correct.
Establishment, is that something that, um, has gone on?
I've done that twice since I've been opening it for the sponsor. My, my softball team throws it so they can get money towards their fees for ball. You know, to go do tournaments and stuff like that, so I let them, you know, do that.
Now, we've also heard, uh, some complaints about, uh, noise-related issues.
Yes.
Um, describe for us what is going on inside alleys during one of the busier times.
Uh, like it's what's been brought up, it's, uh, the jukebox up until ten o'clock on a Friday and Saturday night, and then that gets turned off, and then it's the dance floor.
And you have a DJ that plays music?
Correct.
Um, are there times when the, uh, the front door is open?
Yes.
And, um, is the establishment, uh, piping music outside for, for people sitting outside?
No.
Um, we've also heard some testimony about some speakers on the deck?
Correct.
And, uh, some question of whether or not you're allowed to have speakers or music on the deck?
Correct.
Um, what was your understanding about the council's requirements for use of the deck?
Uh, my understanding was that there was supposed to be no live music out on the deck. Uh, I just, like they said, I just put those speakers out June fourth for my early crowd, you know, like I said, when the, uh, on the, on the weekends, when the dance floor is turned on, the jukebox turned off, so those speakers are not working at all. I have in my office, I actually control the volume to that, two speakers out there, so if the bartender or someone gets a hold of the remote and tries cranking up the, the speakers, it won't, no, it won't go any louder than what I have it turned up to be, which is, uh, you know, I, I've turned them on when there's people out there and people actually talk louder than the music, so.
And then how big are the speakers, when we're talking about?
Uh, they're probably, I don't know, inches by four inches, little white ones.
Um, now, have you received any complaints from any of the area neighbors about the noise coming from the bar?
The only person that's ever I've talked to is John Mingle.
And what did Mr. Mingle complain about?
Uh, the noise, the, the music and stuff like that, and probably six months ago, I stopped, uh, um, dumping, I, usually at the end of the night, I got four or five garbage pails full of bottles, and I stopped dumping those probably six months ago to work with Mr. Mingle. Um, on top of that, I took my dance floor from the back and moved it to the front, thinking that was not going to cause anybody other issues. So when the door was open, that, that music wasn't just thumping out that back door.
Did Mr., did Mr. Mingle ever respond to?
He thanked me when I told him what I did.
Have you received, uh, any complaints, uh, from the other side of the street, say from Mr. Washburn about the noise?
No, that, that's the whole point of it. I thought I was eliminating one issue, not knowing I created another one, because no one's ever came forward and talked to me about it.
Um, now, at, at closing hour, uh, you're required to have all of your non-employees leave, is that correct?
Correct.
And, uh, what's your understanding of the nature of that law? Is that, is that a serious matter for you?
I have zero tolerance on that.
And have you ever been cited for an after-hours violation?
No.
And what happens to your customers at bar closing?
We kick them out at, like you said, by two-thirty, and like, most of them that are waiting for taxis are sitting out front, and, uh, like was brought up with, with some of the other gentlemen here, that they do try to come in and go to the bathroom, but we will not let them in.
Um, and then, uh, you, you said that once they leave, someone usually comes out and tries to tidy up the area?
Correct.
Now, we've heard some, uh, testimony about, um, some, a couple of fights that happened at your bar. Uh, do you have any knowledge about them?
Uh, the beer pong fights?
Well, there was a, an example that I think was Mr. Foster gave of, of him, uh, testifying about a, a bar fight where someone, I think it was you, that said that, uh, there was so much blood, it looked like a slaughtered pig.
Uh, yes, that was, that was a beer pong, uh, situation. Um, to my knowledge, I never went over to Pete Foster's establishment asking for towels, because I have my own. Um,
But you're not denying that that happened?
No, I'm not denying that happened.
And did that involve any of your staff members?
No.
This involve customers?
It, it, it happened in the bathroom where, uh, someone slammed the door, held it shut, and then once they got out, we took care of the situation.
Are your bouncers, um, supposed to remain vigilant to try to, um, preemptively stop things like that from happening?
Yes.
And in fact, do they do that?
Yes, they do.
And what types of things are they looking for?
Uh, any, any issue, any people loud-talking, you know, confronting each other, like it might be a fight or something like that, that, we obviously break that up as, as possible before it escalates to any, into anything else.
How many times has your license been up for renewal?
Three times. I, I think this is the third.
And during those renewals, had there been, um, complaints about how you're operating your business?
Yes.
What kind of complaints did you have?
Uh, just rumors I heard, you know, out there, you know, about certain people trying to advocate against me.
Was that again brought to the council?
I'm not aware if it was brought against the, to the council or not, but it was being said out there.
Thank you, that's all I have for this time.
I would like to add one thing, though, if I can. Um, I would like to add that from two o'clock until all the kids leave out in front of my establishment, there's always presence of one to three squad cars across that parking lot where all this evidence is supposed to be going on, so I just wanted to add that the police department has been doing their job properly, in my mind.
Let me follow up on that point, too. Um, are you aware of other patrol cars in the vicinity?
Yes, they are now patrolling my back, back alley where my deck is at, and there's been foot traffic the last month. They've had two cops coming into, as far as I know, not just my bar, but all the bars as well.
That, that's what I was going to explain. Is this, or wanted to ask you about, was this limited to alleys or this, the, the greater downtown area?
Greater downtown area.
And, um, the officers that are, are sitting in the parking lot across from your establishment, do they, um, exit their vehicles?
Yes, they get out. During the summer, when it's warm out, they actually get out and lean up against their hoods and watch what goes on.
Have you ever seen them respond to, um, unruly behavior or disorderly behavior?
Yes.
So apparently they take it seriously, too?
Very much so.
That's all I have, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Elstrom, you said your bar doesn't serve food, right?
Uh, I do have a restaurant license that I paid for, because I did try food a long time ago, but I have to have one just to even sell frozen pizzas.
Uh, do you sell frozen pizzas?
I do.
Anything else?
Uh, chips, jerky.
And you said your bar doesn't really get busy until eleven-thirty at night?
Yes.
And then it's busy from then until, when does it close?
Uh, when we start the, we shut the music off and start getting people out about two o'clock.
And, uh, what, what days of the week do you have five bouncers on duty?
Uh, Fridays and Saturdays.
And what hours on Fridays and Saturdays?
From nine until three-thirty in the morning, or whenever they're cleaning up is over.
Now, you mentioned this inci, well, you were asked about this incident with the, that occurred when there was a beer pong, or whatever that is, and, uh, where the office, where somebody was in the bathroom and was beat up in the bathroom. Um, and, and Pete Foster said someone came over looking for towels. Uh, do you recall talking to Pete Foster that day?
No, I don't recall that at all.
Uh, do you recall telling Pete Foster that the, that there was no bouncer on duty?
Uh, not at all. I have never had a conversation with Pete Foster in probably two and a half years.
Do you know whether your manager told Pete Foster that there was no bouncer on duty?
That I'm not aware of.
That the bouncer didn't show up that day?
I'm not aware of.
Well, do you know what day of the week that occurred?
Uh, all I know is the beer pong tournament was on a Saturday afternoon.
Uh, and this beer pong, what does that involve, by the way, just so we're, you know?
Uh, that's, uh, they set up some tables and, uh, I've, to be honest with you, I, I've never really understood the game, but they line up some cups with some beer in it, and they throw a, a pong ball in it, and they keep track of it, and there's a, I guess, first, second, third place, because there is a thirty-dollar entry fee that they, goes towards the, the softball teams, you know, like, they, they do, I, I le, I left that up to my softball team. I just do the security.
There's no drinking involved in that?
A little bit, far as I'm aware of.
Pardon me?
A little bit, as of what I'm aware of the game. I don't understand how the game operates, so I couldn't tell you how much drinking is involved in the, in this game.
Um, now, this, this security camera, has it covered the sidewalk in front of this place?
Yes.
The entire sidewalk?
Uh, half the sidewalk. It covers from the middle of my building all the way down to probably Cocobello. I get everything in front of Pete's building as well.
And you ta, you testified that you do leave the front door open when there's music playing, that the, uh, the disco is going on?
When I don't have the air conditioning on and when it, there's a cool breeze, yes, we open the door.
Uh, and then the patrons, they come out on the sidewalk when, at closing, uh, you said they're waiting for cabs?
Yes, that's what I've observed when I've been down there, that they're all waiting to be taxied away.
And is, has there been buses that come and pick up people, too?
Uh, if it's a party bus that's been there for a drink or two, then they leave, but at that time of night, it's just people waiting for a cab.
And there, there's a lot of profanity and shouting that's going on?
A little bit, yes.
And you said there, there have to be one to three, there are, or there's one to three squad cars that are sitting out?
Yes, watching what goes on, observing. Sometimes there's one, sometimes there's two. I've seen it up to three, sitting there just monitoring the situation, what's going on.
That's all the questions I have.
Any member of the council have a question?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Elstrom. Uh, Mr. Elstrom, we've never met, but I had occasion to be in your establishment a couple of weeks, uh, uh, two, three weeks ago?
Correct.
Uh, to see the screen that I'd heard about, um,
Pardon me, that's the what?
The flat monitor.
Okay, yes.
And, uh, I spent maybe, maybe thirty, maybe sixty seconds in your establishment. Uh, that screen really does not show the back stairway, does it, of your deck?
Uh, sure does, yes.
Uh, I didn't see it at that time, and that's neither here nor there, but do you remember, uh, uh, later that evening, uh, placing a phone call to me at my home?
Uh, I sure did.
Okay. Um, and do you remember, um, in no uncertain terms advising me of what would happen to me if I were set foot in your establishment?
Uh, the exact, uh, message I left you is that, uh,
Now, Mr. Elstrom, this is recorded. You left this on my answering machine.
Yes.
Let's, let's ask for a question on the facts and keep it to the facts.
This is exactly what I said to Mr. O'Malley. I called him because my bartender said that this gentleman came down and harassed him about the bartender license, checked him to see if he was a licensed bartender. Um, so then I found out who it was, and I just made a phone call, because he said that we needed a licensed operator on the deck. And as far as what I understood on the council, uh, with the meetings, I felt, you know, there was no alcohol being served out there, and there's a handful of people out there, and my bartenders go back and forth, and we got the camera. I would not need a licensed bartender. So I called Mr. O'Malley, and I told him, I said, hey, before you come down to harass my bartenders, and I didn't, it was not in a raised voice of manner whatsoever. I said, you need, you should know the facts before you come down and harass my bartenders. I said, and then, uh, and then at the end of the conversation, I said, and on top of that, you're not welcomed in my bar, and the next time I see you in my bar, I will prosecute you for trespassing. I said, have a nice day, goodbye. That's exactly what I told him on his voicemail.
All right, anyone else have any questions?
Just a, a general question. Um, we heard earlier that we talked about the, the, the volume outside. When the bartenders are standing outside controlling the twenty-some-year-olds looking for, waiting for a ride, do they tell them to be quiet? Do they try to quiet them down?
Well, no, because at that, at that moment in time, we're actually, everyone's cleaning up. They're doing their, what they're supposed to be doing in the bar. We, we, you know, we, we escort them out. We lock the doors, because if we don't lock the doors, which we forget now and then, we got people that try to come in to use the bathroom. So we have, we lock our doors, and we do our cleaning, we let them all wait for their cabs to leave, so we can actually go out at that point in time and clean up. The thing is, I never knew any of this was going on, because no one's ever brought it to my attention on top of that.
Okay, I got a couple of questions for you. Um, I asked Mr. Foster earlier about, uh, licensed servers and licensed establishment recognizing who had been over-served and detecting, and about the training. And I want to go back to that. I think you said something along the lines of, anybody that we recognize that was totally drunk, we would escort them out. Um, so, would that be in the situation where they became totally drunk while they were at your establishment?
Um, actually, no, there's been times that we've had people try to get into the building, and we didn't allow them in, and they smashed my front window out as well, because we wouldn't let them in the establishment. Um, uh, there's men, uh, it, it's very tough. I'm a licensed operator, too. It's very tough. Some people hold their alcohol very well. You know, and to be honest with you, it's like, it's like a light switch. One moment you can see that person, and he's dancing and having a good time, or she, and then the next minute, it's like bang, it's like a brick hitter. And then, then it's our job, and that, that's why I'm down there, to, and then that's what I'm policing when I'm down there.
Okay, and then let me ask you a little about the beer pong again, and I'm curious about this. So the softball team needed money to help support their season and, and so on.
Correct.
How much money do you think would be raised at the event to support the softball?
Uh, I think enough for them to get T-shirts, their shirts and like hats, and the sponsorship, which I think is like six hundred dollars.
So, just without getting into the details of beer pong, I take it that So, just, without getting into the details of beer pong, I take it that there's an entry fee? That you said it was thirty dollars that the teams paid?
As far as I heard, every team pays an entry fee, and it's a one-hundred percent payback to, like I said, to, for them, they, they make the money, and then there's like, I don't know, I do not know what first, second, and third place is, because it's an incentive for these kids to be there, otherwise they wouldn't be there if there wasn't a payback, so, but...
So, what you're saying is you don't know what first, second, and third place?
No, I just, they...
What the reward or prize would be, but i, are you aware that there is a prize?
I, as far as I knew, that that was going towards their softball team to pay for all their...
No, no, I mean for the participants, not for the organizers, but for the participants. So, if there was a team that paid the entry fee and then competed in the beer pong, and presumably there's a first, second, and third prize, are those prizes a financial reward?
Uh, as far as I know, yes.
Is that a legal activity in your premises?
Uh, as far as I'm aware of, no, it's not.
All right, anyone else have any other questions?
Yeah, when was this incident?
Uh, they do it, like I said, in the three years that roughly I've been open, I've only had two, and it's usually right around softball, you know, uh, March, April, right before softball, so they can get their sponsors paid for, and their shirts, and...
And I, I just wanna clarify something, I, I, when the mayor was asking you questions, did you say it was a legal activity or an illegal activity?
As far as I'm aware of, it's legal to have a beer pong tournament.
Okay, um, so you, are you saying you are or are not aware of whether that's legal activity?
I'm saying, as far as I'm aware, that it is a legal activity.
It is legal?
Yes. From what I've understood, as long as the bar does not profit from anything, just like you, other bars do this, uh, bar bingo stuff, as long as the bar does not profit from, in, in any way, it's a, a legal activity, as far as what I was aware of.
And were the crowds on beer pong day bigger than your average? You said, you know, on a typical night, there's a hundred and thirty inside and two, two hundred coming through, circulating. A beer pong, uh, the fight was in the afternoon, so I take it that was a big crowd day?
Uh, actually, it, it's not, it's, uh, it's only been like twenty teams, eighteen to twenty teams, and that consists of two people.
Okay.
So, the nightlife is way much more busier.
All right, I don't have anything else, anyone else? Okay.
May, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you have, um, five-dollar all-you-can-drink night?
Uh, just for the women, 'cause the women don't really drink all that much, so I, I, I put it for the women.
When, when do you have that?
Just on Wednesday nights, and then I also have two bouncers and myself on call down there at that time.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Elstrom. Any other witnesses?
No.
Okay, and why don't you give us some guidance? After three hours here, I'm guessing someone's gonna need a recess soon. What's our next step here?
Well, the evidence is closed, no further witnesses from either...
I assume you're not gonna allow rebuttal, that's...
Are you requesting that, or...
I, I would just ask Mr. Foster two questions about the question of bouncers.
Well, if we start that...
Yeah.
We're gonna give the opportunity to both, and then otherwise, without it, the next thing is some brief clothing, closing statements and then deliberations. So, um, you have any objection to a rebuttal?
Frankly, I do, I, it's ten thirty, I think we've heard all the evidence that we need to hear, and, uh, you know, if it was that important, I think we would've heard it, uh, earlier when Mr. Foster testified.
I can rule on that, or I can ask the council for a, uh, we can have a motion or a vote to give guidance on that. Do you wish to allow rebuttals at this point? That's the question.
I will move for one round of rebuttals from each attorney.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Okay, any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed?
No.
I heard one no and a second no, it's four to two, it passes, call your rebuttal witness.
Pete Foster, please.
They'll be very, very short, if you'll... Um, that you, Mr. Foster, you talked about that incident in the beer pong day when the person was, uh, injured in the bathroom, and the representative of, of Ellie's came to your place, did you have any discussion with that person about bouncers?
Yeah, I better clarify, uh, the person, uh, injured in the bathroom was at the previous year's beer pong, beer pong tournament.
Oh, pardon me.
This year's beer pong tournament, which, as I mentioned, I thought was sixty or ninety days ago, um, Brian Elstrom, uh, along with his contractors, came to break up the fight, and I specifically asked him, "Why are you guys up here breaking the fight up, where are the bouncers?" And he told me, "Well, the bouncers, they're, they're not scheduled until later." I said, "It's, you know, you've had this deal going since noon, you didn't staff any bouncers to handle a crowd like this?" And he said, "No." And then the next day, he came to me and changed his story and said, "Oh, oh, the bouncer, uh, he just didn't show up."
That's all the questions I have.
All right, uh, Cross?
Um, who was, what was the name of the person that you spoke to?
Brian Elstrom.
Oh, the person that was talking about the, uh, the bouncers. Was that Brian?
Brian Elstrom.
Okay, all right, that's all.
Okay, and I believe that's it, unless the council has any follow-up on that, I think you're released. Do you have any rebuttal?
Brian Elstrom. Mr. Elstrom, you heard the testimony of Mr. Foster about the, uh, the beer pong incident?
That's correct.
Did you have a conversation with Mr. Foster?
Yes, I did.
What'd you tell him?
Um, there was a question about the confrontation that was out front, uh, he made comment about, uh, staffing, something to that effect. Um, it's not, I'm not running the inside of the bar, I'm the con, or not the contract, but I was working, um, as part of, uh, building the deck and that. So, as far as staffing goes, I wouldn't know what's going on with staffing.
So, you wouldn't know?
And then, one other point, as far as having a previous conversation the next day, there was no previous conversation the next day. There was a conversation that would've been out in the front step, um, talking with Mr. Foster, and on top of that, we've been trying to have some communication, um, as far as getting together and trying to clean up in the areas that, uh, might be some issues to Pete Foster and that. And so after this confrontation had taken place in the front of the building, um, the conversation carried on and talked about, and actually shook hands as far as, uh, getting together and meeting in the future and trying to take care of some of these issues. And as long as we're going forward a little bit more, to go back to John Mingo and not, uh, communicating with me, I've got both of these people's phone numbers, by the way. Um, John Mingo did call me the first night that the, uh, deck was opened in the back and left a message, and, uh, part of the message was that I didn't need to respond to the fact that he had called and had the issue with the, uh, you know, his, uh, police call. Um, so I didn't respond to that, and I haven't heard from John since. Um, so, it's getting a little more involved here, but I guess now that I've actually got a chance to speak here, again, I have been trying to work with both of these gentlemen, and, you know, if I haven't, I'd like to have them come up and say that I haven't, because I have extended my hand, and again, like I said, Pete, we were supposed to be having a meeting here sometime that was kind of established last fall when we started working on the back of the deck, and, um, since we've done that, I've met him up on the roof, I've seen him up, uh, taking a look and working with some stuff there.
Mr. Elstrom?
Yep?
This is brief rebuttal, so stick to rebutting, now you're starting to introduce new...
I, I, Mayor, I apologize.
Do we get the rebuttal?
I, I, I apologize, Dean, it's just, there's just some situations that I guess I had a chance to speak, and I just, and it's, and it's the truth. I mean, I have went my hand forward to try to work with these guys, so we'll go back to the questions.
Mr. Waterman, ask further questions and direct this witness.
No questions.
All right.
Sorry, Dean.
No, it's fine, do you have anything?
I'm not gonna...
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
No problem. Um, all right, who goes first for closing statements? Complain it? I think it was brief closing statements.
It'll be brief.
The issue is whether there is a nuisance present based on the, uh, on the definition of, of disorderly house, which, uh, has been, uh, given to us by the, by the Supreme Court, and your ordinances, uh, speak to what a nuisance is. And the definition of a nuisance, public nuisance, under section one seventy-five point two, is substantially annoy, injure, or endanger the comfort, health, repose, or safety of the public. And I think that definition precisely fits what's happened here. Uh, the testimony has indicated that through, uh, the witnesses, that there has been, uh, annoyance, there has been, um, injury to their comfort, uh, there has been, uh, endangerment of their, uh, comfort and their safety even, from the fights that have taken place and, and people climbing up on their, on the, uh, on, on the air conditioner and, uh, the, uh, having this annoyance of, of having vomit, uh, on their sidewalks and on their private property, and these conditions weren't present before Ellie's, um, existed at that location. Now, they talk about, well, we have bouncers, and they talk about whether the police are watching. Um, they talk about they have surveillance cameras. Uh, all that really illustrates is that the nuisance arising from this type of business can't be abated even by these, met, the measures of having bouncers or surveillance cameras or extra police protection. The fact that there is expert, ex, extra police protection, and police officers have to sit in the parking lot, uh, across the street illustrates what a problem is being created by this establishment. They don't serve any substantial food, and they serve only alcohol, and they, uh, the crowd doesn't get going there until eleven thirty, uh, uh, between eleven thirty and, and, and two o'clock in the morning. And then they pour out, and even though they have bouncers, they can't prevent them from carrying their drinks out onto the street, and their cups, uh, which they toss around, and, and we, they're obviously not preventing them from vomiting and, and urinating even on the front of the very building that they've, that they've come out of. Uh, this is a nuisance, it's a nuisance that can't be abated even by their efforts to do so. Uh, now, there's an affidavit also, uh, among the materials that I, I didn't specifically discuss, it, it's that of John Bender. Um, and Mr. Bender went over to, uh, the Ellie's to voice a complaint, and then he, uh, spoke with the, uh, manager on duty there, and then later on, the manager came over, and, uh... He says, "Shortly after I complained to the bartender at Ellie's about vomit in my parking lot, a person that I recognized as an owner or manager of Ellie's came to my business and spoke to me. I told him that the bad conduct of his patients continued, I would consider Ellie's to be a nuisance, and would make nuisance complaints to the city." Uh, he responded that their business was, quote, "Already a nuisance," and they were laughing all the way to the bank, end quote. Uh, John Bender, again, is the owner of Bed Bath, uh, the Bed and Bath store that's across the street, and his affidavit indicates the reason why he can't be here, because of longstanding travel plans. Uh, but this admission of, of being a nuisance is a telling, and it, it accurately describes the situation. Uh, and it's a situation that, uh, unfortunately can, the, uh, well, I should say, the, the statutes provide the procedure for dealing with a situation like this, and this is the process that we're going through today. And it, the statutes provide, uh, what your options are as a, a counsel under this situation. These, uh, everybody, of, of course, has rights, and we, we talk a lot, and we're concerned about people's rights, but along with rights go responsibilities. And if we are, um, I think that it was, uh, Benjamin Franklin that said, um, "Your right to swing your fist ends where my nose begins." And that, what that means essentially is that if you're harming other people, that's where your rights end. And in this case, there's clearly harm that's taken place. Uh, the, you have, um, extraordinary power as a counsel to regulate, uh, alcohol and the sale of alcohol. That power is, you know, indicated in such things as the, that you can control the number of license, that there's the ability to control the number of licenses. It's not like a drugstore where you, or a grocery store, where you probably can't say you can only have three, three or four, or five, or six, or whatever it is, grocery stores. It's different with alcohol. You have the right to control it, and that's been long recognized in the courts, and, and that's what's reflected in the statutes of one twenty-five. That's why there is a procedure like this, um, whereby citizens can make complaints and bring these things to you, and you can take them into consideration, and you have the discretion whether to revoke a license, not renew a license. Uh, these citizens who are solid and citizens and assets to the community are utilizing that, uh, function and that ability that's, in that procedure that's set forth in the statute, and that's why they're here today. They made a compelling case that this is a nuisance to them, under your definition of what is a public nuisance. And, uh, that's, uh, all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll too be brief tonight. Um, you have a, a decision, a very serious decision to make based on the evidence that was presented tonight. Um, the council has the ability to suspend a person's liquor license or even revoke it, and that's an enormous power. Um, and it's not to be taken lightly, and I don't think that the council will take that lightly. What I'm concerned with, however, are the nature of the allegations that we've heard tonight. The statute allows you to take action when there is a disorderly house, meaning that the operator is maintaining within the confines of its establishment, uh, a place that is disorderly or riotous, um, things of that nature. And from the arguments that Mr. Jacobson has said, and from some of the comments of some of the witnesses, you'd think we'd be dealing with Animal House from the movie. Um, but we've, we've been primarily dealing with activities that are going on outside of the establishment, nothing within the establishment itself, with the exception of the occasional bar fight, um, which we've heard, uh, or testimony today of two in the past three years that the establishment has been opened. Most of the activities concern stuff that's going on outside, and we've heard anecdotes about, "Well, a cup was left on a doorstep, I found some blood on a curb, I found some vomit on the, on the sidewalk." Um, we've seen a couple of photographs, but we haven't heard any testimony that the operation of Ellie's, that the bar keeps, that the bouncers, that the owners or operators are operating their business in a way that is promoting this type of activity, that is fostering it, that is embracing it. Um, of the hundreds of people that we've heard, uh, tonight that Ellie serves, at any given night, we've heard a handful of problems. And even the testimony about some of these problems has been less than certain. Um, in Mr. Jacobson's argument, we've gotten to the point of reading statements from people who aren't here, talking about things that... who aren't here, talking about things that people who aren't here told him. We're not only dealing with hearsay, we're dealing with hearsay upon hearsay. That's the nature of this case. And we've heard testimony that while they know that Ellie's is causing all of these problems, is promoting drunkenness, yet many of them don't even go to Ellie's. We've heard testimony about all the urine and the vomit and stuff like that. And we assume that it was caused by patrons of Ellie's because it wasn't there before. But we've heard testimony from the law enforcement officers that this has happened before. This has happened in the past. And while no one here in this room is going to defend somebody that acts inappropriately, that uses vulgarity, inappropriate language, harasses people on the street, or urinates or vomits, that's inappropriate activity. But that's stuff that's happening outside of the establishment. And that is the reason why we have law enforcement. And I think our law enforcement officers do their best to patrol downtown during bar closing and during the later hours, but they can't be in all places at all times. And maybe in a perfect world, we have an officer on every corner, but we can't do that. That's not reality. And I think we have to live in the reality that we have today. So in terms of whether this establishment is a disorderly house, an animal house, I submit to you that the evidence is compelling that it is not. While we've heard some testimony, we've heard some anecdotes, the whole, the whole body of the evidence is that this operation is a clean operation. They don't tolerate crime, they don't tolerate things that would be a detriment to this community, like drug activity, prostitution, gangs, organized crime. None of that stuff is in existence at this place. When a problem begins to develop, their bouncers are trained to intervene, they're trained to remain vigilant, there are security cameras, they have bouncers, not to mention an owner-operator that is been working and very cooperative with law enforcement. I don't know what else he could ask from a bar owner under these circumstances. So I'd ask that the, that the council, when you go back into your deliberations, that you vote no, or that you vote that this is not a disorderly house, and allow Ellie's license to be renewed for a second year. I don't know if that's on the agenda, but I know that's eventually going to be a factor. But I'd ask that the license be renewed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that closes our evidentiary hearing pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 125.12/2. I don't know, do we need a motion to do that? To close the hearing first?
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the hearing. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, hearings closed. At this time, if you'd like, we can convene into closed session pursuant to Section 1985.1A of Wisconsin statutes to deliberate concerning quasi-judicial hearing before the common council regarding the complaints filed by Mingo, Mosenko, and Washburn against alcohol beverage licensee Sharon Horn Elstrom LLC, and pursuant to 1985.1G to confer with legal counsel regarding litigation in which the City of Hudson Common Council is likely to become involved regarding these proceedings and the complaints described in number three. Would you like to go into closed session?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Morsett?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchill?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
All right, so the motion passes. What that means is that we're going to clear the room, we're going to have closed session to deliberate. At the end of deliberation, we will reconvene in the open session. What that's going to mean for you tonight is that, you know, this is the room we've got, although it occurred to me, maybe we could move into my office. Can you, are you part of, will she be?
No.
Then maybe we should let people stay here and have the lobby, and we'll go into my office. There will be room for us in there, and that will let you be more comfortable as you wait. Okay?
Can we go to the bathroom, please?
Yep, we'll go to the bathroom, described in item number three. So the first, is there a motion? There's no motion. I think what the discussion was, I'm a little perplexed that there's no motion.
Yeah.
Are you? Okay. One of you who feels strongly...
Whether you revoke, suspend, or whether you, well, first of all, whether you think it's a disorderly house sufficient to revoke or suspend. That was the nature of what was discussed and...
I will make a motion to find that this is a disorderly house and to suspend their license for 10 days.
A second.
There's a motion and a second to find that this is a disorderly house and to suspend the license for 10 days. Discussion.
I think you should provide reasons for...
I think the, I think for my part, I believe the testimony bore it out. And in fact, even the testimony of one of the respondents was that there is drunkenness and there is a problem, but the television cameras don't seem to be handling it, and the bouncers don't seem to be handling it, and everybody acknowledges there is a problem. I don't believe that there was any false statement given by any of the complainants. I think, I believe their statements were truthful.
Are you relying on the definition of disorderly house in the Cudahy versus DeLuca case?
I believe that this is a nuisance, I don't know that it scandalizes the neighbors, but it certainly is a nuisance and robs the neighbors of the quiet enjoyment of their
Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor?
May I? In listening to the conversation, I believe that this house is out of order in many of the things, many of the things and activities that are going on. In looking at the definition of out of order versus disorderly, it's a very, for me, it's a very close line, whether that disorderly can be put against the house. But there are issues here that need to be resolved, and order needs to be brought back to this, to the situation and things that are occurring there.
I'll call a question. Question's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, raise your hands. All right, motion failed for two. See another motion. Would you like to move on to the next item?
I'll move to, to not call this a disorderly house, citing city of the Cudahy-DeLuca. And with the basis of our testimony from our chief of police, that says that this house is not any ordinary or than other establishments downtown.
Point of order, do we need, do we need to declare that? After we've already...
With the question of whether we need to or not, I, the floor was open, and that's his motion. So, I mean, if you want me to rule on if it's out of order, I'd say it's in order for tonight. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Are you ready to move on to the next item? Are you happy with that?
The renewal question.
Are you delaying a decision on the revocation?
Well, apparently, no one wants to...
I think we need to make, the council needs to make a decision on the complaints.
Okay.
Either they're found to be a disorderly house or not found to be disorderly house.
We did not vote on it. The first motion was to suspend for 10 days. To find it a disorderly house and suspend for 10 days. We can't suspend for less than 10 days.
But it was found not to be.
Well, there were many reasons you could vote no. You could have wanted to suspend for 90 days. That's not clear. Now, the next motion was to not find it a disorderly house based on some criteria on the police chief's testimony. And there wasn't a second.
I'll renew my motion.
And is it that you need some other criteria?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, same motion. Will you read the motion back?
To find the establishment not a disorderly house based on the Cudahy and chief's testimony.
Based on the definition of the Cudahy versus DeLuca and the chief's testimony.
All right, so now there's a motion and a second discussion, Catherine.
I think other council members can provide their, you know, in discussion, reasoning for supporting the motion or not supporting the motion. So if you have thoughts on why you believe it's not a disorderly house, you can state that.
Okay, so floor's open for discussion. Reasons you may be voting the way you're voting. Anyone have any?
I have a couple, if I can find them. I think one of the things that the police chief brought up is the, how well they've been working with them, trying to solve the problems they had. Second thing was the, we've had no after-hour violations. And we've also had no, there's been no underage drinking tickets issued to this establishment. That's the reason I'm voting that way, I am.
I concur with Alan on that.
I would vote for a 90-day suspension or revocation.
The, and in this discussion, as I pointed out to the council, I'm on the edge because they are, at this point, not being good neighbors, although I believe that the good neighbor question and the revocation question are two separate issues. I believe that there are operational issues here that should be addressed to be good neighbors, and I want to see those happen.
I think we... I would just say, I think we have seen plenty of evidence that it is a house that's in disorder. And I would concur with Scott, actually, that we do something more than even a 10-day suspension. But I would, I would compromise on that if there were some other stipulations placed on their renewal.
Anyone else? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Four to two, motion passed. Next item on our agenda is consideration of the license renewal. Consideration and possible decision on Sharon Horn Elstrom LLC application for renewal of alcohol beverage license for 2010 through the 2011 license year for Ellie's on Main.
I move to renew the license with the restrictions as we discussed. And I'm going to, for clarity and absolute perfection in this, I'm going to ask Madam Clerk to read those back to us.
Well...
Do you have them? Or does Catherine have them? Catherine, do you have them, then?
Mary's got them.
Why don't you enumerate those?
No music on the deck, that the deck not be part of the license premises so that there would be no service or consumption of alcohol on the deck. The doors, all doors to the establishment would need to be closed when the establishment's Doors and windows shut, actually, when the establishment is open. That's the, that's all I have.
I think there's one more.
Who has the motion? Scott?
Yes.
And who has the second?
Is that your motion as it was read? Do you have anything to add to the motion?
Did you say no speakers on the deck? No music on the...
There was no music on the deck.
Yeah, no music, speakers or otherwise.
Just no music, period, and no alcohol served or consumed on the deck because it's not part of the license premises. Doors and windows to remain closed, both front and back, so that the noise pollution doesn't leak out.
Okay, is that your motion?
It's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, now there's a second. Anyone wants to ask him to change his motion, to add to it?
I would like to ask you to change your motion and add that if the deck is in use, that there be required bouncer on the deck.
That was what we discussed, yes. I will so move my, I'll change my motion, that a bouncer must be present at all times when there are any, any customers on the deck smoking, or just on the deck.
In use.
Okay. Discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to say that I obviously voted that I don't think it's a disorderly house, but the reason why I voted that way was because of these restrictions we're putting in place. I think that it's something that, that needs to be done to try and maintain some sort of noise ordinance and see, you know, to see how things are going to be handled in the future. So I just want to let you know my opinion as to why I agree with these stipulations.
Anyone else?
The other thing that I brought up, which obviously can't be part of the motion, but just being simple, good neighbors, and that if you got people outside on the front, you know, waiting for taxis that are making a lot of noise, tell them, hey, there's neighbors. And I do that for my kids if they're out making a lot of noise. Hey, be quiet, there's neighbors out there. And I would hope that your establishment will do the same thing and make sure that you're being good neighbors, because you've got people sleeping upstairs and across the
Other discussion?
Well, I agree with the stipulations. I'm very disappointed we couldn't come to an agreement on some sort of suspension, so I won't be voting no.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Motion passed on a five to one vote. That's what you all came for. It's late. Next item on our agenda is to go back into closed session. Is anyone up for that tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. That's a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 1985.1E, to consider negotiating strategy regarding purchase offer and/or possible selling strategy for property located at 701 Second Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Well, you made the motion. Did you second it?
I didn't make the motion go into closed session. It wasn't the motion's part that I heard. You were just reading and then asked for a second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second.
Who made the motion?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion.
Motion, yeah.
Is there a second?
Although technically, this is now June 15th, not June 14th meeting.
Oh, no, we're not publicly noticed. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
This is roll call.
Roll call vote.
Morsett?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchill?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku? Yes.